Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting has been called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be broadcast -- rebroadcast at Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Chair Goines.
Present.
Vice Chair Trowbridge.
Present.
Commissioner Treasdale.
Excuse.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Simon.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Ellsworth.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. I'd like to have a motion for the minutes of the October 9, 2008 Planning Commission meeting.
Make a motion for approval as presented.
Motion's on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Any items from the Planning Commission staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time.
Mr. Chairman, we have a few items. Items number 9, 10, 11, and 12, applicant has requested those items be held to the November 20 Planning Commission meeting. And item number 32, staff has requested this item be stricken from the agenda.
9, 10, 11, and 12. Is that all of the housekeeping items?
Yes, I've been asked to repeat. It's items 9, 10, 11, and 12 to be held to the 11:20 Planning Commission meeting, and then strike item number 32.
Thank you. Could I have a motion on the abeyance withdrawal items as read by staff?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the deletion of the items as recommended by staff.
Motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Okay? We'll move on to our consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. There's one item on there. Item 6, ANX 29903, applicant owner Las Vegas Valley Water District to annex property located at 1350 east -- at -- to annex property located 1350 feet east of North Wallop Highway alignment funding the exit ramp for State Highway Clark County 215. Any comments or questions on the consent items? Seeing none, take a motion.
Make a motion for approval of item number 6, ANX 29903. Recommend approval subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of the consent item. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
That goes forward to council on December 3.
There are no one motion, one vote items, so we will now move on to our...
Actually, I'd like to make a correction on that. That item will be forwarded to the City Council in an ordinance form.
That would be item 6, correct?
Correct, item 6.
Thank you. Moving on to our public hearing items, we'll begin with item 7. Item 7 is SUP 28795, applicant Clear Wire Corporation, owner Lone Mountain Developers LLC, for a proposed 70-foot wireless communication facility stelp design at 4850 North Jones Boulevard. Is the applicant present? Thank you, staff.
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance to allow the applicant an opportunity to hold a neighborhood meeting, which was held. In addition to that, the applicant had also submitted revised renderings and elevations, which were part of your backup, to change the slumline monopole to a monopine. Staff is recommending denial of this project as we find the use is too intense at this location.
Applicant?
Good evening. I'm Mark Sawyer, on behalf of the applicant, 411 Blush Creek Place, Las Vegas. We did hold a neighborhood meeting onsite, and we did not have any neighbors show up at that time. Plan Director Wheeler was there with me, and so we were carrying on to tonight's meeting, and I will respectfully take any questions, since I've been here many times with you before.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who want to speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, any comments or questions from the commissioner? Commissioner Evans? Any comments? Commissioner Simon?
Why did we change from mono to pole to the pine tree or whatever?
Commissioner Simon, I believe it was the second time around, the second -- the second P&amp;Z, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
At the second abeyance, at the hearing, the applicant had submitted on the dais revised renderings that staff had not reviewed yet, and that's when the item was changed from a slimline design to the monopine.
Excuse me, do we have the date on those? I don't -- I'm not in the...
The write-up is a slimline.
Right, they're not in the backup.
It's right out on Lone Mountain, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
And it's 70 feet?
Yes, sir, 70 feet.
Why does it have to be 70 feet? Give me a good reason.
The RF engineers need that height for their propagation of their design.
They all say that.
Yeah, that's the best answer I can give you, sir.
Okay.
That would be revised plans, date stamped, September 25, 2008.
Any more questions or comment from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item 7.
If there's no further discussion, make a motion on item number 7, SUP 28795. Make a motion for approval subject to all staff conditions.
If I may, that would be with an additional condition, that the approval is pursuant to the revised elevation and plans dated 9/25/08.
Thank you. Motion on the floor for approval. Your yes vote is to approve it. Please cast your vote. And that motion has tied, has failed. I will ask for a motion the other way, please. There was a motion for approval, which failed.
I'll make a motion for denial of SUP 28795.
Motion on the floor for denial. A yes vote is to deny. Please cast your vote. And that has failed as well.
Now, go forward to council with the tie vote, and that will be council on December 3.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 8, VAR 29659, applicant Siegel Companies, Inc., owner St. Louis Suites LLC, to allow a proposed 250-square-foot wall sign where 50 square feet is the maximum allowed at 525 East St. Louis Avenue. We'd like to note that this application has been amended to allow four existing five-foot-tall freestanding signs, where one is permitted to allow a distance separation of less than 100 feet between freestanding and freestanding signs, where 100 feet is the minimum required, and to allow for four existing five-foot-tall freestanding signs to be set back one foot, where five feet is the minimum setback required. Staff?
Staff is unable to make a finding of a hardship in this case, and finds that it's a self-imposed hardship, and recommends denial.
Thank you. Applicant?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tony Celeste. Address is 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. Along with me is Mark Whitehouse. We're here on behalf of the applicant, the Siegel Group. As you can see from the overhead and in your backup material, the project is located generally where Paradise and St. Louis converge over to Las Vegas Boulevard. We're here before you today for a sign that is located on the western portion of the building, which faces Las Vegas Boulevard, as well as some four, what I guess in the staff backup is calling monument signs, that are less than -- that are five feet or less, what we're calling amenity signs, which basically allow Siegel to advertise the amenities they have, such as furnished apartments, wireless internet, things of that nature. We're asking for four of those on the south portion of the property along St. Louis Avenue. As you probably are well aware, Siegel Group is a company apartment group that comes in, buys basically tired properties, comes in, does extensive renovations. As you can see in this particular property, they've added a lot of stone veneer, a lot of other amenities, boost up the landscaping extensively. We're now coming back asking for some signage. We did hold a neighborhood meeting with our residents that are just east of the site. They did not have any objections to this, so we respectfully request your approval this evening.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Evans?
Well, maybe someone -- excuse me, maybe someone can refresh my memory. This was the item we were here for once before. If I'm -- or is this a separate one?
Different location.
Pardon? We did across the street. So this is the other Siegel's group?
That's correct.
Okay. And once again, I appreciate the applicant coming forward and cleaning up that property. I think it's yet another overlooked parcel, which, you know, the location could be substantially, I think, good. It's right in the middle of everything. But part of my concern was the application that we had prior with the same company across the street. I had thought that some of the signage was excessive, and I think we came to some compromise, and I'm assuming it's moving forward to the City Council. But on that property, I believe it's the one across the street, the same Siegel Group, I believe that some of the signage, the banners that are up, are still illegal. And, you know, we made a big deal about it, and they apparently still have not been removed. And so that gives me pause. Can someone explain some of that to me?
Yeah, I believe you're probably referring to the kind of, I don't know, other than called a wrap-type banner, maybe that's on their fence or something, I believe is what you're referring to, Commissioner Evans. And that, we did discuss that with our client, as a matter of fact, earlier today, and told him those do need to be removed because...
But wasn't that a substantial part of the discussion that we had when we were here before? I mean, when we were here before, I thought the entire property had lots of signage, much of it illegal. And we made a decision, I think, that we would compromise. It wasn't exactly what I wanted.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Whitehouse. He was present at the last hearing.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
You're absolutely right. We did discuss it, you know, quite extensively. And the illegal signage, we did discuss with the client, and they have agreed to take down the signage. We're in a bit of a catch-22, the clients in a bit of a catch-22, with the process of the variances for Paradise being approved and compromises being reached. Through that process, the client and the property still needs advertising. And I certainly understand that we have codes for a reason, and no one is trying to put their nose up at the city of Las Vegas or any of its codes. However, the client, Siegel Group, was desperate for advertising, putting so much money into these properties. You know, the vacancy rate, once it drops below a certain percentage, it turns into a loser. And they had to keep their vacancy rates up to continue to buy properties and continue to rehab properties in this city. Now, now that the compromises have been reached, we have discussed with our client to remove all the temporary signs and move forward with permanent signs that are now...
Weren't you cited by code enforcement for the signage?
I do not know where that stands with code enforcement. I do not have record of that. It could very well be the case. I'm not saying it's not true.
You're cited for the signage, and yet still don't bring it down, and yet you come forward with another application across the street. I, you know, I'm sympathetic to the fact that you need to advertise, but I think it deters from the entire neighborhood when you have excessive banners plastered all over the building.
I agree with you, and that's why we've moved forward, to design a very tasteful package and, you know, convey to the client that we need to follow the rules, we need to take them down, we don't make the rules, we follow them. And that's exactly what we're going to do, Commissioner. We've reached a compromise on Paradise, and are moving forward with that. As far as St. Louis is concerned, the banner off the fence has been taken down. We now are coming to you, asking for a signage package on this property. And I know that we have a property right across the street, but it's so important, the Siegel Group takes great pride in what they're doing in the community and what they're doing on their properties. So they find it very important to label the properties and brand the properties accordingly, even though they're right across the street. And this sign will be facing Las Vegas Boulevard. The zoned properties due west of it are commercially zoned properties. The sign is a blue face sign, which will light very dimly at night. It will not be an obstrusive sign. So we've done the, our due diligence in the neighborhood, and we respectfully ask for your wisdom on this matter, to allow us to move forward with this package and have the amenity signs that we have compromised with across the street, and to allow the one single-face sign, where we would be able to have four single-face signs on each of the elevations of the building. We only want one facing Las Vegas Boulevard, and we ask you for that respectfully.
Thank you.
If I may?
I think what Commissioner's saying is, looking at these signs, it's probably as easy as taking a pair of scissors and snipping the sign down and putting it back in the car, and you'll be all right. So, but I think he's having a little reservation of you not complying on the last one and then coming in and asking for the same thing. And then we see pictures right here with illegal signs posted in front of your complex.
Yeah, that one's actually removed now, so that one is gone.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
One, our packet, and as well as has been shown on the screen of this evening, there's a picture of a Siegel Suites sign on a stone background.
That sign that we're asking for tonight is the, it's a replica of the sign we're asking for tonight, so that will be removed. And place, if we can get your approval, we will put the permanent sign.
I guess just a little...
What do you mean by it? Is it the same size? Is it the same verbiage? Is it the same color?
Exactly, yes, exactly.
Why are you having to change it? I think that's fairly permanent to me.
It's actually a banner that's laid inside on here.
Okay, but you're replacing the banner that looks like that with the permanent sign that looks like that.
Very, yeah, the sign is very similar to that. There's probably a few differences, but for the most part, yes.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Simon?
Mr. Celeste?
Yes.
Can you explain to me, on the plan, there's a, there's a sign, an A sign, which we just, is on the screen, and four C signs. What are the B signs? Nobody's talked about the B sign.
It is my understanding there's no issue with the B signs. That is a linear neon that's at the trim of the building, and it's encased in a channel with a Lexan cover.
Where did we read about neon? I don't remember that at all.
That's a close-up of what it, how it's actually constructed, and if you look at the elevation, you can see it at the top of, at the top of the trim, the little yellow line there.
So that will light up?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it will face only Las Vegas Boulevard.
With kind of a trim around there.
Yes, that's correct. Just on the two little stone veneer walls. And when we submitted this, there was no issue with the neon, and we double-checked with...
So I guess your thought is, somebody passing by, that'll kind of catch the eye when you look?
Exactly, exactly. It's just one of those things. I don't know if you've ever seen neon trim on a building, but it does catch your eye.
And it's important to note, it does face Las Vegas Boulevard away from the residence.
Is this, is this it? No more signs? This is, what we see is what we're going to get.
On this property, yes, sir.
Unlike what I watched happen yesterday, in which we added back some signs across the street. I don't want to see you come in and add more signs to this one. So I want a commitment that this is it.
Yes, sir, you have a commitment.
Everybody's got to understand when you go to council, this is it.
The package before you today, sir, is it.
Okay. All right. Any comments? Any more commissioners? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Take them.
If I may, a couple things. I believe we neglected to point out that there were additional protests that are in your package.
That is correct, Director Wheeler.
The purple cover sheet. And then also, a neighborhood meeting was referenced. Did that go through the city?
No, it was just voluntarily...
Then we have, we cannot verify that. Thank you.
Entertain a motion on item number 8.
Regards to item number 8, variance 29659. Make a recommendation for approval subject to all staff conditions.
Motion's on the floor for approval of item 8. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That goes forward to council on 12/3.
Item 13, MSP 29350, applicant owner Centennial Durango Partners LLC, major amendment to a master sign plan, ARC 26110, for a 12-foot monument sign, and waivers from the Town Center Development Standard to allow a 12-foot monument sign where eight feet is the maximum height allowed, and to allow a two-foot sign setback where five feet is the minimum setback required at 6403 North Durango Drive. Please note that this application has been amended to allow a zero-foot sign setback where five feet is the minimum setback required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance in order to allow the applicant to work with staff in order to relocate that sign, to move it further away from the entryway to the center, to avoid a site visibility issue. The applicant has submitted revised plans to move that sign further towards the freeway. Staff is recommending denial as we find it is a self-imposed hardship. Please note, we have received additional protests.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stephanie Allen, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant. As you can see on the aerial, on the overhead, or actually here, this property is located at the northwest corner of Durango and Centennial. It's just south of the 215 Beltway, located right here. There's an existing commercial center on the site, and for whatever reason, the previous property owner never built a master monument sign or a pylon sign on this property. So that's what we're here before you today with, is a proposed master monument sign for the property. We were before you a few weeks ago, and the original proposal was located right here where this arrow is pointing. It was located near the entrance on Durango, and there were some questions and concerns raised with regards to visibility, since it was located so close to this entrance. What we've done is, we have relocated the signage over 20 feet further to the north and slightly slanted where this arrow is pointing right here, to address any visibility issues or concerns. It's now located closer to the 215. It's slanted, and it's not anywhere near that driveway. So from a visibility standpoint, we believe we've addressed that concern. We do have some requests for the monument sign to be 12 feet in height, where eight feet is allowed. If we had proposed a pylon sign on this property, we would have been able to go up to 24 feet in height. So we think that the request is reasonable, and actually a better-looking sign. I can show you a picture of the signage. This is the signage that's proposed. It'll be a multi-tenant sign, and it's been categorized as a monument sign because it looks like a monument sign, but we are asking for a little bit of additional height. As far as the setback goes, this red dotted line that surrounds the property is the property line. As you can see, all the way along the property, there is a significant amount of space beyond the property line, probably, I would guesstimate, 30 feet between the property line and actually Durango, because you've got a very wide sidewalk, a landscape buffer, and another landscape buffer on either sides of the sidewalk. So we've got a great amount of distance. We just didn't have all that much room to work with from the property line, because there's an existing wall, and the buildings have been built out onto the street. So that's the reason for the request. By moving it further to the north, we did have to increase that variance request from two feet to zero feet, because we are, it is narrower up here to the north, but we think it's a better location and addresses the Planning Commission's concerns from the last meeting. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we'd respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Simon, and then we'll go Quinn and Evans.
I was one of, Commissioner Treasdale and I were ones who felt there was a different problem here, and when you go out, it would have been. And I think this is a proper solution. I think it gets out of the line of sight, and there is a lot of room out to the street level, or to the street line. So I think they've gone back and corrected it, and I like what they've done here. Now, these problems crop up because we require that buildings be put on the street. And when you put them on the street, this is what you get. And you have the problem with not enough room for these things. So I think, I'm not saying we contribute to the problem, but it creates the problem, and I think we've solved the problem here, and I would support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
I just wanted to say for the record that I met with Ms. Allen this week, and I also support the project for the same reason as Commissioner Simon, that you went back and you did your due diligence, and you made it a much safer environment for people coming in and out, and it was a nice meeting with you. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, I would concur. I met with Commissioner Quinn, and I both met with Ms. Allen, and everything that she's represented this evening on the record is substantially what was introduced in our meeting. Just a matter of disclosure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Take a motion on item 13.
I'll make a motion on 13, MSP 29350. Move for approval, subject conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
Thank you. Final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the office of the City Court.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Item 14, WVR 29865, applicant John Stalupi Jr., owner Centennial Azure LLC, to allow exposed neon border where exposed neon is prohibited at 6200 Centennial Center Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me? Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance in order for staff to address issues with neon approved within the Town Center area. Prior to the adoption of the Town Center, there was an adoption of the, of a Town Center LLC for this site, for the site itself. It was adopted under what's referred to in the Planning Department as the Brown Book. Within the Brown Book itself, the sign standards can be approved by the master developer, and in part of that, the majority of the neon that was addressed at the last meeting was approved as part of the Brown Book in itself, and that's what allowed the neon within Town Center. Staff does find that the request for neon at this time is not a conformist Town Center development plans and is recommending denial. Those memos and extra items are part of your backup at this time that discuss those various signs that were adopted through the Brown Book.
Thank you. Applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Madam Director, Mike Bellin, 1408 Saintsberry Drive, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. John Stalupi. Briefly, we continue to claim no particular hardship, but simply would like to point out that when Mr. Stalupi built his first dealership up at Town Center, Planet Nissan, he submitted to the Town Center standards and worked with the Centennial Hills Architectural Review Committee and built that facility without any neon. Subsequently, Mr. Stalupi acquired the Pontiac Buick GMC dealership and also a Kia dealership, and then went on to build the Centennial Hyundai dealership, currently own and operate four of the, of the seven or eight facilities in that area. It was when he went to build the Hyundai dealership that he realized that there were not only other buildings or businesses that had neon on them, but that there were other auto dealerships. So simply, all we asked for was what we believed might be fair or equitable, because neon does have a significant appeal to would-be auto buyers, and that's why we made this request. So with that, I now submit to your...
Can you explain how neon and auto buyers go together?
You know, sir, I wish I could. Unfortunately, there are...
Well, you said it.
Let me continue. Wiser or more educated men in this field, and if it didn't help sell auto, excuse me, automobiles, they wouldn't pay to put it on there. I mean, it just is something that seems to work in the auto industry and in many other industries, as we see around the city. It certainly attracts buyers. So with that, I submit to hopefully a brief lambasting about the evils of neon and ask for your approval on our application.
Had you had a set of flags and balloons and a big gorilla on a string, you'd probably tell me that attracts them in as well. I always thought it was the price.
You know, I don't sell cars, so I honestly don't know, sir.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments from the board? Commissioner Simon?
Last time, I mentioned that this application was denied by CHARC, Centennial Hills Architectural Review. And I don't know what's changed since we denied it before, except it's before the Planning Commission, which the CHARC has been eliminated, so it's back here. So we're second time through, and I don't see anything that's changed at all from that day.
I understand. I unfortunately wasn't involved with it at that time, so I can't answer that question, but I understand.
Thank you. Commissioners Evans and Quinn, any comments? Seeing none? Commissioner
Ellsworth? I struggled a bit with this, because, and I come in new, but my struggle is this: there are other buildings right around you that have the neon, because they came under the Brown Book Development Standards. And you're right there near them, right?
That is correct, sir.
But the neon lighting you want is accent lighting. Is it big, bright? I mean, describe the neon to me.
No, sir. As you may or may not be able to see in the package you have, it's just accent lighting. As you can see on the picture that's currently on the screen, there are some indentations below the Centennial Hyundai sign, and the neon just goes inside those indentation and wraps slightly around the side of the building.
So where I struggle is that we have other buildings that have neon right around the same neighborhood, within, it's just short distance of this one, that have brighter neon lighting, and yet, and you're coming to ask for accent lighting. I have a hard time denying your request because of the similarities.
I appreciate that, sir.
But I don't have the background that these other commissioners do in terms of prior submissions and prior appearances here before the commission itself. But I just want you to know that that's where I stand. For the record, it's a difficult thing for me, because I understand what the standards are, and we should, we have the standards, we should implement them and follow them. But at the same time, I sympathize with your plight here.
Well, I appreciate that very much. And again, we would not consider wasting this commission's or the city council's time with a request that we didn't feel was just simply equitable and fair and gave this dealer an opportunity to compete equally with the other dealers in that area.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sir?
Perhaps this would be for Commissioner Steinman or Director Wheeler. What was the former review body, the CHARC, what was the makeup of that board? Who did it consist of?
CHARC was-
And was this an identical application?
A former Commissioner Dunham, and myself, and two people from the public. And that was the four-member committee.
Are they property owners within the Town Center?
They're from Ward 6, I can tell you that.
Right.
And does anyone know if their vote was unanimous, or?
I'm not going to tell you that, but my recollection was, we turned it down. I don't remember, it was two to one, three to two, whatever it may be, but it was definitively turned down.
And just as a matter of history, in the Town Center Development Standards, I know that when they created the Town Center, it was supposed to be special, and there were, I think, more restrictive building standards, and I'm assuming that they exist today, may have been modified from time to time, but was the purpose of that to keep businesses from becoming too flashy? Did they want a subdued look? I recall there was some discussion years ago about whether or not they wanted car dealerships within the Town Center, or whether they would be relegated to certain specific areas. Maybe someone can refresh my history of the site?
Well, there was the very definitive standard set up up there, and if somebody like this dealership wanted to deviate, then they had to come to this body of two commissioners and two or three people from the public to decide whether they can deviate. And they were very set standards up in that entire area. And I, and when you go up there, you find that the In-N-Out Burger and another place next to it has their neon, and that was before our time, and I don't know how that happened, but I think that may be out of the immediate area of this particular restriction. So it's always referred to as a property up there that has neon. So there is a little confusion on that part of the thing, but we decided at that time, it was extensive neon that was going on this building. It wasn't just on the front, for example. It was all the way around, if I recall, and that's why I think we went denial on it.
So have they reduced it to the best of your knowledge?
Considerably, sir.
You have reduced it considerably?
Yes, sir.
If I may, what's considerably?
I believe there was a request, and I'll have to go back and look, but to outline the words "Centennial" and/or "Hyundai," as well as the Hyundai symbol on the building with neon. Now it's just one color of neon, just in the bump outs or the indentations as an accent light.
I-
Thank you.
I see two or three strips of neon, it appears, together, in the drawing that I have. Do you have the drawing there?
Yes, sir. I apologize. Let me see if I can pull that forward. It's simply a single band of neon within each of those indentation or bump outs?
That's not what we're seeing. We're seeing something totally different.
I only have a smaller drawing, sir, and I'll see if I can place that in front of you.
Just place it right on the table, and we'll zoom down on it. Thank you.
Just for the sake of argument, would there be any provision that would prohibit all the other car dealerships and various businesses from coming forward if this were approved and saying, well, we also want neon within our building? And would that be a consequence that we don't want to see in the Town Center? Would there be a precedent set and any sort of legal precedent that will allow for, because I don't know how you allow it for one business and not another?
Each case, if I may, each case, of course, is taken on its own, and as Mr. Rankin indicated, the circumstances of the previous approvals were under different circumstances for approval. In this case, this application comes before you, as it does not meet the current standards and requires Planning Commission approval for the waiver as is noticed. So as is the case in every, any, you know, instance of a variance or a waiver, each application is taken upon its own merits and does not necessitate the commission taking the same action in the future on another project.
And I guess my thought, because to me, this isn't really that substantial, one way or another. It's just that I want to honor the work that all the people did when they created the Town Center and the Town Center Standards. I think a lot of people put a lot of effort and time into that, and I'm a little reluctant to just arbitrarily chip away at those standards, because at the end of the day, I'm a little concerned about what we have. Is it anywhere, does it resemble any of the original intention of that architectural standard, which purposefully was set high, if I recall?
You're absolutely right. Any more comments or questions? Some of the still are the same belief. When you drive, when you get to Centennial and Tropical, whether you go to the south or the north, you know you're on Auto Show Road. And so auto dealers typically, like your rendering of your building, they're huge. How tall are those light poles out in the parking lot? Are they up, what, 30, 40 feet up in the air, and they're lit? I mean, when you go by the car dealership, the whole parking lot's lit. I mean, the showroom's backlit. It's just a beacon sitting there saying, "Come see me, I got cars for sale."
I understand. I don't deny it. I couldn't answer exactly how tall the light poles are on the facilities. Perhaps Madam Director Wood or Mr. Rankin might know, but-
And I think certainly it will set a precedence if we pass this, because if other owners of dealerships are watching this, and you certainly just made comment, as a matter of fact, where you said you believe these neon accessories help with selling cars. So if we allow this here, then we're going to have another dealer that's going to come in, because he's going to feel you now have an advantage over him. So it's going to create a precedent.
Well, actually, sir, that is why I'm here. Mr. Stalupi feels that the other dealers, as you can see before you, the Mazda, the Mitsubishi, and Mr. Jim Marsh's Jeep dealership, and I believe the Pontiac Buick GMC, already have that opportunity. He built his first dealership according to the standards, as he believed was he was supposed to, the Planet Nissan dealership, but when he found that the other dealerships in that area already have accent neon lighting, that is why he made this request.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Trowbert?
My view of the request is that it seems consistent with what's in place there now. I do recognize the hard work that people did to put together a unique plan to address that area, but within the area, you've got its general commercial Town Center that's currently occupied and being used in a manner consistent with this request, and I would be willing to make a motion. There's no further comments.
Please do. Any more questions from the board? Motion, please.
Regards to item number 14, waiver 29865, make a recommendation for approval, subject all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 14. Please cast your vote. And that motion has failed.
Thank you all very much for your time. Thank you.
Not only will you have car dealerships, then you'll have McDonald's, you'll have the, you know, everybody coming in.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the office of the city clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Item 15, ZON 30261, applicant owner ARG Jones 2 LLC, a request from R1 Single Family Residential to PR Professional Office and Parking at 216 and 220 South Jones Boulevard. Is the applicant present? Take your time, sir.
Good evening.
While we're waiting on Mr. Rankin, I'll have Margot. We have a new member of the Planning Department here this evening, and he certainly wants his 15 seconds of fame, so here it is. Margot?
Mr. Gabacki is not a new member of the Planning Department, but he's new to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Steve Gabacki is one of our senior planners that's now working on the Planning Commission team, and will be one of the faces that is rotating before you. So I'm sure you'll go easy on Mr. Gabacki this evening.
Welcome. Staff?
Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, as the proposed zoning district is consistent with the existing general plan designation and will be compatible with adjacent properties along Jones Boulevard.
Thank you. Applica?
Good evening. My name is Greg Wild from Wild Hanson. I am the applicant, and I have with me tonight Mr. Craig Moore of Ability Construction. With staff's recommendation, we ask that that moves forward as a consent item before the city council on the zoning.
If it gets approved here, does it happen?
Could you please, could you please, we can hear you, but can you put your name and address on the record, please?
Yes, my name is Craig Moore. I'm the owner of Ability Construction, and I live at 2517 Lakeside Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Go ahead. Your comments, please?
I was, we were wondering if this was approved, this zoning matter, if it needed to go forward as a consent item to the city council, or does it end here? Yes, no?
That item would go forward to the city council as a public hearing item?
All of them.
Oh, it wouldn't go forward as a consent item?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, I'm not sure if you have any questions about the zoning request. I think there will probably be some other questions on the variance and the SDR.
Yes.
But with that, would you like to vote on all of them together, or do you want to vote on the zoning one first?
We're going to talk about them all together, but we will vote on them separately.
Okay.
Okay. Right quick, let me go ahead and read the variance and also the SDR into the record. Item 16 is variance 30267 to allow a 13-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required, and a 72-foot setback where residential adjacency standards require 96 feet for a proposed two-story office building. 17, SDR 30288, for a proposed 4,982 square-foot two-story office building with waivers to allow a 13-foot landscape buffer where 15 feet is required along the west perimeter, and a zero-foot landscape buffer along the north perimeter where five feet is required. So now, at this time, if you want to tell us about 16 and 17, we'll hear it.
Yes.
Go right in.
I previously had a 6,000-square-foot building approved on this site approximately three or four years ago, and what happened is, due to some asbestos concerns with the residential properties there, it took some time to get those torn down and move forward with the project. Again, everyone, or excuse me, most people are familiar with the Jones area, how it's gone from residential to commercial. We feel that this is the best use of the property, because otherwise, it's going to remain a blighted, blighted lot, that is, with graffiti and trash on it. We feel that a new building would look much better on there. Again, the front setback is 13, where 20 is required. I made a big concession from dropping the building from 6,000 to 5,000 and moving it as far forward as I could. Again, I had to push the building forward, because Public Works required a 24-foot turnaround in the back. We had previously provided a design with two driveways, and again, Public Works told us no, they'd rather have the one. Again, there's no other PR neighbor in that area that has the required setback. And again, we are only using 35% of the property instead of the 50% that's allowed. I'm not sure if you have any other questions, but again, to add the required frontage would require a building much smaller.
I'd like to add, I'd like to add to that, if you look at the drawing, and I'll put it right here in front of us, the 15 they're talking about is from here to here, and we have 15 here, and they wanted us to put some architecture appendatures, and so we bumped and bumped here to make it look fancy. And if, you didn't bring the, Brian, could you bring up the elevation plan? But so we have an area of approximately 18 feet, that's the 13-foot setback where the 15 is, and then we have approximately 10 feet on side, each side that's 14, and then we have the big area on each side, which is the 15 feet. The architectural renditioning of the face of that building is a curved front with a small stone, multicolored, glistening, embedded, really fancy-looking front with storefront windows that are tinted. We have foam outs at all the windows, and at the top of the building, we recessed it twice to give it a castle-type effect. Now, if you looked at the current zoning that is required for the 97 feet in the back and the 20 feet in the front, if you added that together, that's 117 feet, with this lot's only 120 feet deep, we would have a three-foot-wide building, 70 feet long. And we built, most of the buildings on Jones Boulevard, I have been the builder, and I was, did the, the very first one, and under the reign of Mayor Jan Jones, and she got up and thanked us for all the houses were being abandoned and vacant, broken windows on Jones there. We've built most of those law office buildings and whatnot on that street. And this is the first one where we torn, used two lots. And the reason we had to use two lots is you can't do any more single lots, because every so many houses, they had, the driveways were side by side. And what we could do is get a joint access agreement between the two property owners, and then they could both use it and have enough for fire department access and for the public to park in the rear in order to have the required parking that was required. Those lots are all gone. If you look at the round map for the, it shows the site area map.
The first one they had there?
It's on your little drawing. You will notice that the remaining lots that are not developed, that are still R1, on this particular map, you can see these PR zoned houses running down here, and you'll see about every sixth one is R1. They're going to stay R1s unless you let the people tear down two lots and build one single development. The problem we're having doing this, now that we're doing it, is they've changed it on us to where we put 20-foot setbacks in the back of all those backyards, and we put enough, got enough parking to meet the requirements- of the planning department. We've narrowed this building down to 32 feet wide. My house is 40. That gives an office on each side with a hallway down the middle, and we got 72 feet of rear property yard, and that's the absolute minimum, I mean, minimum we could, can make that, and we're talking about the front yard at the same time. Now, because there's an 8-foot required rear buffer of landscaping, the minimum space for a parking stall is 18 feet. The space between the parking stalls is 24 feet, then 18, and then we have a sidewalk there that comes out of the rear, that's our main exit. You have to have a distance when the door opens of 5 feet of travel. I'm the former chief building inspector for the city, so this is one of the things I really know a lot about. So there is no way we can make that any less and move the building back to get the 15 in the front, and they wanted two fingertip islands in the parking in the rear. Now, if we did that, we wouldn't have enough parking, but what we did do is the areas that we jaunted the building, we put planners in there along the back of the building where I'm pointing to now, to overdo the amount of landscaping that was required in the two fingertip islands, where they say we have zero landscaping on the north side. This is the north side. We have 8 feet of landscaping the entire length where 5 is foot is required. They say zero because we put a trash enclosure in there. For 10 feet, there is no landscape buffer. We had to move it exactly 15, 50 feet from the rear property line because that's R1 properties, the whole street on the backside is R1 properties. Everything on this side is PR except for those four lots, double lots left that are R1s on Jones Boulevard. We will probably intend that this passes to commence after this one is done, just keep going on Jones Boulevard and finish developing it so it looks nice. However, this doesn't work, then none of them will work, so it, because you can't get a driveway in the back anymore. But anyway, we have, with our side, we had to have a 24-foot-wide driveway on the side with 8 foot on each side, landscaping buffer, and a 4-foot-wide accessibility route. So those are the minimums there, which created us a building that was 72 feet wide and 32 foot, I'm sorry, 72 feet long and 32 foot wide.
I'm getting lost here. You're using a lot of numbers on me, and I'm not hearing why you need the variance. Maybe you can tell it to me in simple terms.
Well, because 97 feet is required in the rear because there's R1 properties in the back, even though none of the properties on Jones Boulevard have more than 20. This is the first PR-zoned property that they're asking for a 97-foot setback, and it's the 3 to 1 ratio to residential, but none of the properties that have been built on Jones, the PR-zoned buildings have more than 25.
Mr. Chairman, through you, if I can ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, go right ahead.
The residential properties behind you?
Yes.
There, it looks like there's two or four that are immediately or directly impacted by this application. Did you get any concurrence from them or any written submissions indicating that they were okay with the variance and the design that you're asking? Because the way I see it, their homes, I'm assuming it would be their backyards, would back up into your property.
Okay.
And that's my big concern, and if I may just make a comment, because I'd like to see if you would address it, not unlike the other application, you're coming forward, and from what I'm hearing, you're saying that you need these additional considerations in order to make this property work for you. The reduced, I think the setbacks, where the residential setback makes a requirement, some of the landscaping and for various reasons, at least that's what I heard. But my big concern is, I'm looking at this application, I'm assuming you came forward to the planning department and did a pre-application process. The staff goes out, as you well know, of being a senior, former senior building guy, they go out and they take pictures, and I'm looking in the backup, and the first thing I see is that a field check was conducted, and they noted that the site is vacant with concrete slabs remaining from the demolished single-family residences that previously occupied the site. There's debris, including two couches, and I'm looking at our pictures in the backup. You've got these couches and all these concrete blocks. I'm assuming these are visible from Jones. You're the property owner. You want us to give you some consideration and basically waive or provide variances, and yet you come forward with an application with sofas in the, on the lot.
If I, Craig, let me speak to that. I mean, since the field inspection on September 30th, we've fenced the front of the property and run a fence back, and we have weekly trash removal off those premises. And again, that, the minute I tore down the buildings, that trash started to be deposited there in the evenings.
Well, they didn't put the concrete slabs there, did they? That was from your demolition.
No, and again, we demolished the houses because we were cited by the city because...
At what point were you guys come forward in good faith with a clean lot? You want something from us, but you come forward with this garbage?
Again, I think you're mischaracterizing what happened.
I'm looking at the picture.
I understand.
You can see them right on the screen.
I understand, and again, we have this project moving with the previous application that we filed. The two years ran on July 7. We submitted our application to open it up to continue with the progress, and on July 8, on July 7, we were there. They wouldn't take a check from my office, they needed a check from somebody else, so we returned the following morning. We were told we were a day late on the renewal of the previous application, so we started over. But this, there is no way that we've neglected, if you went out and talked to these four or five neighbors in the back, they would, they would back me up and assure this board that we've done everything we can to keep this project moving along, and they would tell you they're grateful that we tore that property down and that we take the weekly trash, we remove it from there, and that we fenced it off. The minute those buildings were torn down, we started having the graffiti and the trash put on there. I haven't personally spoken to those people that are on the back, but I know when I'm on the site and I visit the crew that's on the site, the people come out and, you know, we talk and we converse. I think they're quite glad for what we're doing. That, I think that's a mischaracterization of what we've done with these premises. If you were to go by there tomorrow, they're going to be clean. You're right, I haven't removed the, I haven't removed the foundations. I can't at this juncture. I'm waiting for approval so I can get the SBA loan and take care of the rest of it. I've spent, and I don't know that the board needs to hear this, but I've spent almost $100,000 removing the premise, removing the abandoned homes.
To me, you could have spent 50 bucks and removed the couches and the concrete.
That's only been there a week, that couch.
But the point the commissioner's making, it's there, it's an eyesore. We see it on a picture taken from 9/30/08, and it's just a simple fix to clean up the property, so...
And it has. If you would drive by today, it's fenced off and the trash is removed. Granted, the foundations aren't removed, and that's a major concern that I have. I want to do it, but I need approval so that I can continue to approach the SBA. My application's...
To move dirt off a property, you need SBA loan?
No, I'm talking about removing the concrete, the foundations.
You're talking $30,000 a lot, but also...
Nonetheless, Commissioner Evans, your question?
I'm finished.
Applicant, go right ahead.
One other thing I want to say is, we just barely pulled those demolition permits just a few months ago, and we had to have the Clark County Health Department down there inspecting every day, and we was torpedo wrapping this stuff and taking it to the dump, and we had the OSHA inspectors out there. We have not even finalized those permits yet. They're not been finalized. We're still working on those demolition permits. They were just recently pulled, and they're not, they're not done yet, the demolition permits. We're just out of money.
Thank you. Are you finished with your presentation?
I think the only other concern was the comment about the trees. It says that we're short two trees in the parking area, but I think the board will notice that we have extra trees in the other areas. Again, we don't have the fingertip landscaping areas because it would ruin the parking and the turnaround in the back.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm going to open a public hearing, and then we'll close it and ask for additional questions. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Additional comments from commissioners on either side? Mr. Steinman?
I think this is a, this kind of a building has got to be an improvement over what's gone on in Jones. I'm not real convinced that Jones turned into a great white way, and the redo of old residences, which has been the mode through there, they serve a function, but they are old residences that sit down through there, have been remodeled somewhat. But this is taking a different tact and going with a brand-new structure, which, to me, I think adds to the area and is a positive situation. Yes, you don't like couches, and we don't like concrete and all that kind of stuff, but I'm trying to look at the fact that maybe this is a move, I don't know whether it'll catch on, but it's the proper move to make that street look a lot better.
Thank you.
Is this the final color of the building that we're seeing?
No. We couldn't get a color to match the aggregate because it's a silver and gold shimmery thing.
Okay.
And they asked us to submit some cards to the planning commission, and when we took the cards, we see the top is metal. On the third row back, it has a metal cap, and that almost looks like a castle, and we just couldn't match the colors, and that's as close as we could come to those colors.
So what's our finished product going to look like?
It's a regular standard beige. These tan beiges, we use chalk. The top is a tan metal color. That rounded front area is a silvery brown, glittery, shimmery. The windows are tinted like storefront, but they're, you know, they're tinted, they're tinted, not just, they're clear see-through, and, because that's the, that particular big window area you see there is the conference room, and we have, we, we're going to put a fountain out front, but they wouldn't let us, so we put a planner out there with a bench all the way around it so people could come out of the conference room and sit around the planner there and take a break and be outside in the nice garden, because it's all garden. The whole property's garden.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn, I think you have a comment?
Yes, I have a comment, and I have a, starting with the zoning, without a doubt, it should be zoned to the office professional. That's the way Jones is going, and that's just the way it is. So of course, I will agree with you on that, but to go to the variance, I, along with Commissioner Evans and Steinman, agree on both sides that you got, it should have been cleaned up, and it should have been looking a lot better than this in front of us in good faith, because I'm a little bit nervous as to what you're going to come up, come back with, if this is what you're coming forward with to try to convince us to give you all these nice things that you're asking for. My thing is, is that I do believe it's going to be better than what is around it, and I think you're going to build a nicer building, but what I would like to see, before you get my complete support, is not that it might be a little bit glittery, or it might be a little bit more tan, or it might be a little bit this. I think maybe, is there a way for, if we held it for just a couple weeks, you could show me something more concrete, sir, not parapunk concrete?
I have an artist rendition of this.
An artist rendition of this.
And I thought it'd been submitted, and I apologize.
Because I, I know it's better than what is along there, and I know you're moving forward, and it's going to be a nice project, but if it would be okay, I would like to hold the variance just for a couple weeks so that, before I push the yes button, that we can see exactly what it's going to be, and that you also do, for respect of the neighbors behind, talk to them directly, because, just because, it's not that I don't believe that they are in agreement with it. I'd like to hear it or see it in writing or something, so would two weeks bother you just to give me a little bit more? Because I really want to see it built, and I want to see it look really nice.
Applicant, before you answer, Commissioner Quinn, I think if we've got related items, I think we'd have to hold them all together as opposed to separate.
We'd have to hold them all, just for a couple weeks. Is that okay?
That's, that's fine. I'll return in two weeks with the artist rendition, and I'll talk to the neighbors in the back, and I'll submit up the pictures.
Commissioner Quinn, if you want my support, I want you to know this. You need to come forward and clean up the property first. You're asking for my vote, the staff is recommending denial of the other two items. I would agree that perhaps something there is an improvement, but I am so disappointed, time and time again, seeing these vacant lots full of trash and debris, and those concrete things, they need to be moved. Whether you go forward with your project or not, the site needs to be clean.
I just, and also, most of that is not from our project. It was dumped there in the night along with the couches. That won't happen in the future because there's a fence now.
There is a fence.
And also, I'll submit updated pictures in two weeks if that's what the board wants.
I drive by my, my things that are in my ward, and I look at them. There is a fence there. It has been cleaned up, but for my personal, for myself, I would like to see exactly what this building's going to look like, exactly what color it's going to be, and a little bit more of the renderings that you say that you have.
I have one, and I apologize.
And I just think that's fair, don't you?
That, that's fine.
If you could find some swatches and things like that.
No, no swatches.
No swatches?
No swatches.
The artist rendition, it shows the way the property's going to look.
Neighborhood support, like, you know...
I'll talk to the four people along the back.
The ones directly behind, and then we'll go forward, and it's going to be a nice project.
Okay, so if you could hold this in advance for two weeks, I'll return.
Can I ask one question first?
Let me have Commissioner, and then I'll...
Next question.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Rankin? This seems like a very unusual place for a trash receptacle, especially when the gates of the trash receptacle will open into the driveway, and generally, they are open at most places we go by. Is that the right place for a trash receptacle?
Well, we rely on the applicant to cite their trash enclosure and ensure that they have accessibility by the trash company so that they can serve as their trash receptacle. It does meet residential adjacency standards, which is the first issue that we would like to address, but there are other options for the location of that trash enclosure that would function.
When the trash company comes to pick that one up, they're going to occupy the entire driveway, without a doubt, and it's just not a very good situation. But yes, I understand if you move it in the back, it's going to be next to our neighbors back there, but I found that quite unusual, where that was, especially with the doors swinging open just during the day. It's sitting there, and people have to divert, because there's a two-way in and out, so I don't, I don't like that, but I don't know what the answer is. Maybe somebody can come up with something. Can I say something in regards to that matter? We have to be 50 feet from that rear property line, and if you move that anyplace else in that rear property, then where's that? It's, it's in the parking, and we're going to have that much parking. There's no place else to put it.
Maybe we're stuck here, but that is a poor place for that trash.
Is that an indication it's a little bit overbuilt, since you can't find anywhere to put trash can?
I think, I think that it's overbuilt. If you want my personal opinion, it's got an awful lot of landscaping.
Commissioner Quinn, any more questions or comments from the board?
No. My motion would be to hold number 15 zoning 30261 until when? Margot?
And also 16 and 17?
Yes, 16 and 17.
For two weeks, will be November the 20th?
And...
Can I ask my question now? I asked, asked one question, and he wanted to talk to that guy. Does the rest of the board feel the same way as those three people did, that if, just, we're just dealing with the colors now?
You're about 10 seconds away from finding out. Well, we're actually going to hold it, so you won't get on the vote. You won't find out till next time, but there is a motion on the floor to hold items 15, 16, and 17 till November 20th. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Moore, are you okay?
Hey, another request. Could you put a ramp out front?
Pardon me?
Could you guys put a ramp out front?
Could you guys put a ramp out front? Them stairs took me an hour to get up. I had to walk clear around the block to get to it, and I can't walk that far either.
We defer you to Mr. Anderson at Public Works.
No, sir. Wouldn't be Public Works.
Chairman.
Jim Lewis, Attorney's Office. The Clerk's Office has something for the commission on item 14.
Could we please have a motion for denial on item 14 since the approval motion failed?
On item 14, we need a motion for denial since the motion for approval failed.
As the commission knows, you always need to have a vote in the affirmative.
Can we review where we were on that one? Make sure we understand.
This was the neon at the...
Was that a 4-2 vote?
That was a 4-2 vote. It didn't fail.
The motion to approve failed because there were four votes to vote no on that. So it wasn't approved.
So you want a motion on number 14 to deny?
And would like preferably yeses to support that.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, I will move to... I'll move to rescind number 14.
No, we're not rescinding.
Okay, I'll move to deny number 14.
Motion on the floor for denial of item 14. A yes vote is for the denial.
Wait, 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 wait. How did I vote before?
Madam Clerk, do you... Can you go back and let the commissioners know how we voted on that item, item 14?
The vote was motioned by Vice Chair Trowbridge for approval subject to conditions. It failed with two yes votes and four no votes. The yes votes were Vice Chair Trowbridge and Commissioner Ellsworth, and the remainder were no votes.
So you are a no vote, Commissioner Evans, on that one?
Yeah. But no motion is for yes.
Is for denial.
Is for denial, correct.
Yes.
That's correct. Please cast your vote. A yes vote is for the denial. I think we need to show Vice Chairman Trowbridge as a no vote.
Let's just try again.
Please re-vote on item 14. A yes vote again is for the denial.
Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
For a matter of clarification, just without a lot of debate, isn't it fairly simple that if something fails, do you have to then have the opposite vote? You're going to end up with the same result. Why... And why do we do it sometimes and not others?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may.
We should be doing it all the time. If we miss it, I'm sorry. The fact of the matter is, we always need a vote in the affirmative. And so if we've got a vote that is not in the affirmative, you're going to hear me ask or the Clerk's Office ask for a re-vote.
Even though the result is the same.
Even though the result is the same, because it could change. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 18, VAR 30268, applicant owner Brent and Suzanne Bell Family Trust to allow a 1.5-foot side yard setback for an existing patio cover where 10 feet is required at 2001 Eagle Trace Way. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff finds this to be a self-imposed hardship and recommends denial. Please note that staff has provided an additional finding in regard to how the lot was determined, which is within your blue sheets. Please note also, we've received additional comments.
Thank you. Applicent?
Yes, good evening. Brent Bell, 2001 Eagle Trace Way. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Madam Director, I bought this house about three and a half years ago, and although I love it, it does face east-west. And it is a... Due to the lot configuration, the house is pretty close to the property line. So the patio cover encroaches to allow a little bit more shade back there. May not seem like a hardship, but when it's 110 outside, it's pretty warm, and this allows for more shade. I have 10 copies of three letters, the first being most important from the only property owner that I encroach upon, and that's Canyon Gate Country Club. I don't know if you have that one. The second one is from the Homeowners Association that also approves the patio cover. And the third letter I have here is from the homeowner to the south of me, who also happens to have a house that faces dead west and the direct sun. So I think it's a good-looking patio cover. It does not affect anyone. The golf course obviously approved it, has no problem with it. So I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience want to speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
Yes.
Mr. Steinman, and then...
I want to tell the applicant that your wife and daughter were very kind to me when I came out, when you were away on Saturday. And I did see this. And I did... I wanted to see it because it was one and a half feet, and what's all about. If nobody else is seeing, let me assure you that the way he's situated, there's nobody that can see this patio cover where it is. These lots are huge, and he does come up to the golf course. Were you approved by the golf course or by the HOA?
Both.
Oh, both?
Yes, I have the letters here.
Okay, all right. Have they been given on the record? I think they should probably be given on the record. Okay. So I'll just say from my standpoint of looking at it, they happen to have a flag lot, and they're behind another house. So it's fine. It's fine the way it was. It's very satisfactory.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Evans?
I was just going to concur. I think it's an irregular-shaped lot. This applicant did everything they're supposed to do. They got the concurrence of their neighbors, from what I understand, made a compelling argument. And if there's no further discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion for approval of this item.
No more comments or questions?
If I may, proposed additional condition for your consideration would be that the final building approval must be applied for within 30 days.
So moved.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 18. Please cast your vote with the additional condition read in with Director Wheeler. And that motion has passed.
And that does go forward to the City Council on December 3rd.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Item 19, VAR 30271, applicant Tower Realty and Development LLC, owner Regal Plaza LLC, to allow a proposed 10-foot-tall, 435-square-foot roof sign where an 8-foot-tall, 150-square-foot roof sign is the maximum allowed at 5831 West Craig Road. Staff?
Staff is recommending denial of this variance request as the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing a roof sign that exceeds the allowable height and area, and no unique or extraordinary circumstances have been presented. There are additional protests on this one.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Director. My name's Kelvin Haywood. I'm the architect for the applicant. This is Lisa DePass, who represents the owner directly. I have the site plan up here, if you just sort of pan in on it. I want to sort of explain to you, first of all, right behind the... This is the actual site. The sign is actually would be right up front here, facing Craig and Jones. The residents are directly behind it, so certainly the sign won't be facing them or directing them at all. Also, right across the street, right across Craig, just want to show you a couple photos. There's Lowe's, and there's also a Walmart. And those are the signs that are, again, across the street that are facing south, back towards Craig. Now...
Is this the shopping center with the Penn Express and all that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Gotcha. New bank on the corner?
I'm sorry?
The new bank right there on the corner?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Stuck in the drive-thru, Mr. Steinman? Go right ahead, Mr. Haywood.
The owner has an existing facility of Vegas Water Sports. This is actually in Henderson. So I want to take a picture to show you what the signage looks like. He wants to keep his... Keep the signage the way it is because it's sort of a patent for the Vegas Water Sports. And lastly, what I want to show you is what I believe staff is having or recommending the denial. You'll see, first of all, this is the addition where we have Vegas Water Sports. The existing building is in the green, and then this is... All this is existing, which is up front. This is the anchor of the building. Now, so what's happening is, there's no way for us to actually fit the signage on the existing frontage, else we would try and do that. We aren't able to do that. So the top of the actual roof, from the top of the actual roof and the top of where we want to extend it, is actually about 8 feet 6 inches. I'm sorry, 6 feet 8 inches. So I know staff, it says 10 feet from the top of the roof line. That's the top of this roof line, not the actual top of the highest point on the site. So again, in looking at, you know, what we're proposing, what certainly is across the street, the signage, again, is facing Jones and Craig. So we would respectively ask that you would consider that and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. That may save that shopping center. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this? Please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Russell. How are you?
Well, I'm going fine, Mr. Chairman. How are you this evening?
Very good.
Well, I'm really delighted to say it's never happened before. My name is Teddy Russell, resident of Las Vegas. I've never been in this area or been in this area. I think the arguments are logical and compelling. I have compassion for staff and the bonds in which they labor. In other words, I thoroughly recommend approval. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Quinn, Commissioner Steinman?
This is not going to look good. I mean, you've got good architecture in this center, and placing this huge sign on the roof makes no sense in the center. And that is a huge sign for that size store. Now, you could take that sign and put it between those two columns that go out there as a wall sign, if you will. You can do that, and you have it all over that center, wall signs. I don't know why you want to put this thing way up in the air and change the architectural look of this center, which looks fine at this point. So I can't support it, because I don't think it's going to look right at all.
The way I have it designed, I'm actually the architect that redid the face of this particular building. And also, on the... To the west, where the... This corner is down here, there's actually a sign up there that's equal or larger than this size as far as height-wise. The sign that we're proposing, again, it's really the length that's getting us. And we won't actually be able to squeeze it in there. We'd have to break from his patent to do it like that.
He wants it like the other one.
Yes, sir.
And that's where the problem is.
Yes, sir.
And you're going to have to adapt it to this center. That's what you're going to have to do. That other place where he is looks like a huge building compared to this one. I think it must be a bigger facility. So he's trying to put that big sign on a smaller facility. And I just think it's going to change the look of the center. I think it's wrong to do it. Opinion only.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Trowbridge, Commissioner Ellsworth?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I have some questions. Number one, you have the big sign. Is there a way it can be placed lower so it's not up so high above the existing building? In other words, you have those two towers out front there, right? Is there any way it can be placed across the front of those two towers and span it some way so we don't have to worry about this height?
The way the building's built, in order to do that, it would actually be more construction than building the wall. Right now, the... Where this sits on this back wall, there's a concrete... I'm sorry, CMU parapet that is... It probably sits back here. I'm just going to draw on here real quick to give you an idea.
He's an architect. He's going to draw.
Do you need my pen?
Did you understand his concept about lowering it and putting it on the front?
Yes.
You understand that as well?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
You can't see that. But these two towers, they actually sit up here like that. So this parapet is actually back here. So in order to do... Certainly, I understand your request, but in order to do that, you'd actually cover up a whole bunch of other stuff. And it's the structure, and I would have to ask staff about that. But to do it like that, I think we would... There's another signage deal that we would violate by building it like that, because we'd have to brace it back and what have you. Here, we're just building the wall up.
All right, so that goes... My second question, if you can't span it across, the problem with shrinking it down so that it fits in there is simply the style, or what's the reason?
Again, the branding for Vegas Water Sports.
They not only want the look, but they want the size?
Yes, exactly where it is. Again, on the existing building, where you can see it, there's a lot of, you know, of space there. The height certainly isn't as high, but it's just the furniture that they have to do on this.
Well, between those two towers, whatever you call them.
Yes, sir.
You could put Vegas and then Water Sports. It would fit. They don't like it because they want it to look like this.
The branding.
That's the natural place to put it. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to read into the record, because there's a couple of protests apparently from neighbors, and I think this one sums up some of the sentiments, I think, from some of the neighbors in the area. It says, "To whom it may concern, it was our understanding that the signage would be limited and unobtrusive to the neighboring homes when we first attended meetings with NARA regarding this shopping center. The owner was aware that the neighbors were against this shopping center initially, but we did relent with stipulations under the original agreement, one of which was the maximum signage of 150 square foot and not taller than 8 feet. While some things may have changed in the shopping center, our properties have not changed, and we are still homeowners opposed to large sign and bright lights that will adversely affect our small community." Thank you for your consideration. And that's Russell and Linda Glaze from Keisha Court. Can you respond to that? Because I'm not familiar with the history, and I'm curious if, in fact, one of the original conditions for approval, when they allowed the shopping center and I think probably a zone change in the site plans, were the restrictions on the signage, both in height and square footage?
That is correct, sir. I mean, I can't go against what was originally approved, because that is correct.
But isn't that somewhat of an unfair playing field? That in order to get the original design, that you agreed to certain conditions and hammered that out with the neighbors, and then you come back again and say, "We really didn't mean it?" I mean, it just strikes me as being unfair.
Sure. And I don't... When that happened, the... There was a pub going in there, and so the signage was actually on the south-facing of the building. And so they didn't want it lit, you know, lit at night and sort of, you know, shining into the back of their backyards. This particular sign, however, there's no light on the back. There's nothing that'll shine in the back. Again, I showed you where the residences were. And this actually fronts Jones and Craig, again, across from the Walmart and the Lowe's. And so the hardship, while I understand, I don't think it affects the residents except for the height. Again, which is in their backyard. So in the distance, it certainly meets the 3:1 ratio for an R1. So again, I understand, but we're still meeting some of the other restrictions.
Commissioner Ellsworth, this is your area, and you'd be more familiar with it than I would. Is part of the issue the height, and would it be visible from the neighborhoods, the residential, anywhere near there?
If it is, it's from the backside, and it would be the neighbors only that are close by there. If I recall correctly, running along the... I forget, I think it's... I forget what the back street is.
IRA.
IRA?
Mm-hmm.
But if I may, Commissioner, so what you're saying is you can't put it across the front because it'd be too costly to modify the front towers or whatever it is? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, I'm not saying costly. What I'm saying is, there are other stipulations that, when you set a sign up, when you brace it back, there are some other stipulations that, basically, you'd have to follow. I'd have to go back and take a look and see structurally if it's viable, because I think, actually, if we did that, you'd really change the face of that center.
I mean, I want to make it clear, I live fairly close, and I want to see something go in there and be successful. So, I'm all for the Water Sports coming, is it Water Sports?
Vegas Water Sports.
Vegas Water Sports coming in. I think that'd be a great addition. We just need to make sure that the sign is harmonious with that development, and that's what we're trying to do, is find someone, we can either set it down a little lower or shrink it a bit and fit it in between the two. I mean, something to where everybody's going to be happy.
To, I think to move it up front, that would really change the face of it. The, you know, the sort of towers, I think, adds to the architectural feel of that particular site, and I think it works very well. So, I really don't want to change it. That's why, again...
What does the backside of that sign look like? The backside?
It's a wall.
It's just a wall?
Yes.
So, there's not going to be braces there? The neighbors are going to be seeing?
There'll be some structural, there'll be some structural bracing, but not in the 45-degree angle.
Would you want it in your backyard, where you saw the backside of that wall?
Well, I think...
It's either yes or no, really.
Well, if I could see it, that'd be an issue. But if you look at, I mean, just from the back of the building, we're over 60 feet setback. So, from the front of the building, that's another 40 feet. So, we're about 100 feet.
So, you don't think the neighbors behind are going to see it?
From that wall? I would have to stand back there and really take a look at it. Just from being back there, and I've been back there a number of times, you can't see the front of the building and up over. The ratio is just too great. You actually cannot see that.
You mean the sight, the slope of the line of sight?
Yes, line of sight. It's too, you just can't see it. It's not physically possible unless you are 20 feet tall.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
I want to see it go in there. I want to make it very clear for you and for the owners, that I want to see it go in there, I really do. But my suggest would be, can you come with some, can we put this off a couple of weeks? Can you come with some drawings or revisit this and try to find some way to either shrink it down and make it a little more harmonious with the existing architecture or the structures that are there? Is that a possibility?
Yes, sir. Yes, it is.
Fellow commissioners?
Don't we have some, you're an architect, so I'm assuming you might know, but perhaps an engineer better, but don't you have a way you can do line of sight to determine what exactly that would look like from any existing residential?
Yes.
Yes, because that would be something I'd be curious about.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ellsworth, I believe, to hold this for two weeks, and that would put us to about November the 20th.
That's correct.
Motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Mr. Haywood, while you were so eloquently presenting, we were trying to act like architects up here, and while you like to use the stroke of the pen, we did a little cut and paste. But we took a little sign, took the little sign here, and we kind of saw how it would look, dropped in front of the building like that, and we thought that looked great. You made a comment that you thought this would put the sign out of code, but during this two weeks, we don't think it will, but can you look at that option?
Sure.
Run it by staff to see if it does violate anything?
Yes.
And when you come back in two weeks, that could be one of your options, so...
Okay. Sure.
Thank you very much.
I'll certainly take that into consideration.
And if you ever need an assistant architect, I'll give you my number. Motion on the floor to hold for two weeks. We're just waiting to post. And that motion has passed.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Items 20 and 21, related items. Item 20, VAR 30789, applicant owner Esme Francis, to allow three parking spaces to back onto a public street where two spaces is the maximum permitted at 919 Hazard Avenue. Item 21, SUP 30250, for a group residential care facility, maximum six adults, with a waiver to allow an 830-foot distance separation from another group residential care facility. Staff?
Staff is recommending denial of variance 30789, has no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances being presented. The applicants create a self-imposed hardship by proposing a use which is too intense for the proposed site and therefore cannot meet the minimum parking requirement. Staff is also recommending denial of SUP 30250, because there are already two existing group residential care facilities within the minimum 1,500-foot required distance separation area, which was established to prevent oversaturation of the use within a limited area.
Thank you very much. Applicant, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Esme Francis, and here's my sister Sharon. I'm a caregiver for over 20 years and a property owner, and my sister is an RN. We are here to ask you kindly for the approval on two issues at 919 Hazard Avenue, which will be Twin Lakes Residential Care Home. A variance which allows three-way parking where two spaces are required by zoning. A special use permit to allow 830-feet distance from another group home where 1,500 feet are required. The project is Twin Lakes Residential Care. It will be a max of six elderly people who cannot manage on their own and need assistance in personal care and activities of daily living. There will be a certified aide and an RN 24 hours daily. I have gone through, I have gone door to door to all my neighbors, and I told them about the project. They have supported me immensely, and a gentleman who lives in Washington Avenue had objected to the project, and when he came and talked to me about it, he congratulated me and said he's in support of the project, and he also sent a letter to the city. These are all the supports that I have got from the neighbors.
Please submit those to the court. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Supporting me on this project. We are, it will be a project that is going to be beneficial to the community, and we have been trying to keep the area as clean as possible. Even if I'm walking on the street and see a bit of paper, I would pick it up.
Yes, ma'am. I could see by inspection on the 30th of September, which says the property was observed to be well-kept, two-story, single-family home with generally mature and front yard landscaping, so...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Continue.
I want to say my reasons, or reasons for having that length of time to put the project together is because of the things we are required to do, and we have tried our best to do that, and in the middle, we have got stuck with financial problems, as I have to go back and forward to Jamaica to take care of my illing mother and bury her. I do not drive, and I have it very difficult to get a job, and when I do get a little something to do, I have to live in the house for maybe 14 days before I come home. I'm asking you, please, to give your support on this project, as I am trying my very best to be of great help to the community. This is my sister, and she will, if you will, allow her to add to this conversation.
Yes, ma'am. How are you, Sister Sharon?
Fine, thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Name and address for the record.
909 Hazard Avenue. Okay.
Your name?
Sharon Spencer.
Thank you.
Okay. This project has been going on for a few years now. Okay. It just started, and during that time, I went ahead and did the research to find out about care homes, because I went online and looked on the requirement for the city. And I even spoke to, I called as well. And at the time, I was told there were no care home close to us. There was, I was told there was one next door, and it was no longer in business. Also, the distance, I think at the time, was like 660 square feet or feet away. And what I saw online yesterday was that it was changed to 1,500 during 2007. We got our permits to do whatever work we need to do, and each time, the city would come in and say, "We need to do this. We need to put in handicap facility and all that stuff." Okay? We went ahead and did all of that stuff from the city. Each requirement, sprinkler system, everything was done. And the only time I'm hearing about the care home being, another care home being so close by, was when I, the health department required a letter, a zoning letter, because I was also told that zoning was okay for such a facility. Okay? And the health department wanted a zoning letter, and when I went to the city for that, that's when all these issues came up. You know, I had done my research previously. At the time, I was in good standing, and because of financial difficulty, it took us that long to get things going. You know, and by that time, the rules has changed.
Okay.
You know, and so, I'm here standing here, asking for your consideration in this matter for us.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or concerns from the commission? Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just for my sake of clarity, this is an assisted living facility for seniors, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is it a hospice care at all?
No, it's actually her primary residence. We're just going to have some resident in the home.
How many?
Max of six.
Maximum six?
Yes.
Is that what's allowed by code?
Well, it all depends on how much you can have, how big the facility is, how big the home is.
And you installed a sprinkling system a few years ago?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And I saw in the backup, although I see in this that there was two protests, but it said that there was support from the neighborhood, I believe. And is that what these letters are?
One of the protests is, there's a letter for approval on one of the protests. He protested first, then he came and met with my sister, and he wrote a...
Yeah, he wrote a letter. I saw, yeah, I saw where he...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, as long as, this will likely see my support unless my fellow commissioners dissuade me otherwise, in that I think these senior assisted facilities are very much needed, and I know when my grandmother was in one, I only, in some respects, wish it were a parking problem, because I think people should visit their families when they're in these places. But I know from my own experience, it was a godsend. And as long as it's not obtrusive to the neighborhood and there isn't a proliferation, if I'm not mistaken, the reason why we put this in our code was so that we wouldn't have clustering in a neighborhood, where you have lots of visitors and a street with its, basically, all, you know, assisted living or group home. But I'm appreciative of the fact that you have letters of support, and I would be curious to see what my fellow commissioners have to say in this regard.
Commissioner Quinn?
The people that own the other group residential facility 830 feet away from you, are you in contact with them at all? Do you speak with them? Okay. Because I was thinking, if it was me and I didn't want you to be my neighbor, I would be here to discuss it. I, too, along with Commissioner Evans, had the distinct privilege of allowing my father to live in a facility like yours and to die with dignity and with wonderful care. And my thing would be, I will support this evening with the request of Ms. Wheeler adding maybe like a six-month review of where you go in and, you know, is that what it's called? To check it out? You know, the health code, six-month review kind of thing?
Well, I was going to, I was going to suggest that if it saw my support, I would ask for a review period, but I don't know if six months sounds like...
Or one-year review.
An awfully quick period to me.
One-year, just because, you know, it, I'm going to support this with a one-year review. That's how I feel, and I wish you a lot of luck, and I, along with Commissioner Evans, hope you have lots of visitors and complaints about parking.
If I may ask, did you want an administrative review or a review?
Administrative.
Excuse me?
Which means she doesn't have to come back to a public meeting. We'll just do it administratively.
Yeah.
Yes. Commissioner Steinman, any comments?
No, I went out there, and I'm not sure.
You didn't check in, did you?
I didn't, I needed to, but I held off. It was a bad day that day. Yeah. Well, he's always ragging on me somewhere.
If I may say...
Wait a minute. The variance, the variance is fine. I mean, they're going to squeeze three cars in there if they can, and there's only one driveway, they'll get in and out somehow. Can't get over the curb very well, that's not very good. So, I don't have any problem with that. But this house is so well-kept and in fine condition, I think it typifies what they expect for their residents, so I will support it also.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Go ahead, ma'am.
If I may say, my sister lives next door to the home, and she could always walk...
Ma'am, I think you're, just, hear us out.
Want me to take him there?
Hold her, Sharon.
Can I take him there?
Vice Chairman Trowbridge or Commissioner Ellsworth?
There's no further discussion. I'm ready for a motion.
We'll go ahead and take a motion. I just want to give a comment that I support it wholly. I've looked at the notice area, 830 feet from another one. The thing I like the most is, I've seen you working on this since '05, and you've taken all the proper channels through the permitting process and also through the inspection process. I'd just like to tip my hat to you for that.
Thank you.
And I know, I have a wife from the Bahamas, and y'all are from Jamaica, but call me when the peas and rice are done. Nobody out here knows what I'm talking about, but they do. Yeah.
I know what you're talking about.
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
I congratulate you on a nice business proposal and your willingness to comply as best you can. Needed facility, so without further ado, in regards to item number 20, variance 3789, make a recommendation for approval subject to all staff conditions.
Aren't there other things known for Jamaica, other than peas and rice?
The plantain and... Motion on the floor for approval of item 20. Please cast your vote.
And in regards to...
That motion has passed.
In regards to item number 21, special use permit 30250, make a recommendation for approval subject to all staff conditions.
And would that be with a one-year administrative review from the date of final city council approval?
Right. Motion on the floor for approval with amended condition, added condition. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed. Good luck.
Both of these items go forward to the city council at their meeting of December 3rd.
Thank you very much.
So, make sure you come back for the December 3rd city council meeting.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a great evening. Item 22, SUP 29936, applicant Richard Brown Schreiter, owner Stan Quoc, for an auto repair garage major at 3405 North Rancho Suite 170. Staff?
Staff is recommending approval of this request, because the use is appropriate for the location. There's already an existing auto repair garage minor located at the subject site, and the conversion to an auto repair garage major will have a minimal impact on the... conversion to an auto repair garage major will have a minimal impact on the surrounding land uses.
Applicant?
Good evening.
How are you?
Richard Brown Schreiter, owner of Supertech Services, 5824 Velma Avenue. Um, there are, there are five auto repair shops in this facility. Um, as, as of I know now, we're the only ones there that are certified. We are, we're also a, a state emissions inspection and repair station. Lots of auto repair companies around, we wanna do it right and in order for us to, to meet all of our clients' needs, we need to be able to do major repair.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody who'd like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions? Commissioner Ellsworth?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I've looked over your, your proposals here and we have a question for, we received at least one complaint, there may have been multiple of people of your, or the employees are test-driving the cars down the neighborhoods and some of them accuse you of speeding and so forth, and I just wanna make sure that, that your understanding is that that's not gonna take place and that, that never, right? That won't happen?
Absolutely, never.
And where are you gonna test-drive your cars when you're, you're doing your work on them? Where are you gonna do that?
I'm gonna pull up a map right now.
All right.
Um, I actually, on my test-drives, obviously we do have to test-drive.
Certainly, and that's understandable.
If I can find the blooming map, huh?
If you know the names and streets, you can just tell me what the names, I'm very familiar with that area.
Okay, well, here, here they are, right?
Just put it right in the center of those...
Just like that?
Yes, and we'll have an overhead camera.
We're here. We are right about there. Our test-drive typically would be out on to Rancho, down to Cheyenne, back up to Michael Way and then back around and then back to the front entrance. The people, I, I know the, the complaint you're talking about is, is some people who live on J Street, which is J Avenue over here on the east side of Rancho. There are multiple automotive repair companies in that area. Plenty on the west side of the street as well as the east side of the street and, once again, we, we never go to that side of the street. Even if I have to do a long test-drive, we will typically go up to, to Jones, then back down to Rancho and then around that way. We're always on the west side, we never speed. Um, and the only residential, um, street we would be driving on would be Michael Way and that's a 25 mile an hour speed zone.
Generally speaking, I mean, I, I, I don't have any objection to your, your proposal here, uh, so I, I support you in it, but at the same time, I do wanna make it clear, make sure it's clear for the residents, that neighborhood, they don't, on those surrounding neighborhoods, they don't need to worry about your people driving, or test-driving in their neighborhoods or speeding and so forth.
Absolutely.
You're gonna keep it on the major streets.
Absolutely, yeah. And once again, there are multiple auto repair companies along this way and it would be very easy for them to, to cut out onto, to Rancho and make a ride onto J Street. It's certainly not us.
Commissioner Eldridge, if I may, through you, Mr. Chairman. The staff report, once again, minor issue, but I'd like to bring it to the applicant's attention. It says an unpermitted banner was found on the site as well as vehicles offered for sale. I'm assuming that's something that you could correct?
It has already been done, sir.
Okay, thank you. And then, secondly, I think the commissioner has, makes a, a great point about, you know, basically being a good neighbor. Would it be appropriate and, and Commissioner Eldridge, would you consider a motion, if your motion is for approval, that perhaps we have yet another administrative review of this in a year or two to make certain that there's no complaints? Because it is a special use permit and I'd like a mechanism where if there is a problem that we have a hammer.
I have no objection, I think that's a, a good idea. Go ahead, I'll make a motion when we approve, agenda item number 22, SUP 29936, with the condition of a one-year administrative review, subject to all of the staff's recommendations as well.
Motion's on the floor for approval of item 22 with an added condition for a one-year administrative review. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Thank you so much.
And this matter goes forward to the city council at their meeting of December 3rd.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You too. Item 23, SUP 30239, applicant owner Christopher Allen for an existing 640 square-foot accessory structure, class one, with kitchen at 1125 Kalan Drive.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is making minor changes to a, an approved accessory class two structure that was built some time ago with the original home. Staff finds that it's minor in nature and can be conducted in a compatible or harmonious manner with the surrounding area and recommends approval.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, my name is Michael Swift, I'm here on behalf of the applicant and I live at 2806 Paradise Isle Avenue, North Las Vegas, Nevada. I have read the staff's recommendations for approval with one exception, the rooftop unit to be placed on the ground and I respectfully, I request on the owner's behalf to consider a waiver for this conditional recommendation. I, I base this justification and I can demonstrate to several points that we can make if I can direct you to exhibit A. And I understand that this, this is a representation of the entire lot, or the entire block around the proposed special use permit building right here. And about 70% of the existing homes currently have rooftop units identified with, I'm not sure if you can see the whole...
Yes, we can see it.
...map, but these indicate, just, just a few of the observed residences that have rooftop units currently visible from the street. Our property, this accessory building is much lower than all of these primary structures, including the, the applicant's primary structure, which is here, which currently has existing rooftop units exposed.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interrupt you, sir. Have you discussed this with our staff? They're recommending approval of this. Sounds like you're wanting elimination or revision of the condition. Have you asked them so that they would be able to assess whether or not it would meet code and whether...
I had just gotten this report last night, I called today and I actually spoke with Larry, I didn't get his last name, but I voiced my concerns and tried to get a call back, but it was late in the day, so I wasn't able to...
On behalf of our staff, can you make a representation whether or not it's a deal killer?
Mr. Chairman, through you. Title 19.8.08, request that any new utility or air conditioner is be placed upon the ground. It's a should within the 19.08 development standards, it's not a shall. It's just a requirement of that, so it would be a condition that we added to being in conformance with that request by 19.08, that it should be ground-mounted versus roof-mounted, but it is not a shall requirement.
Thank you.
So no waivers required.
Okay. Commissioner Evans, you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Applicant, go right ahead, sir.
I would just like to state again that this accessory building is much lower than all the other neighborhood, uh, primary residences. It is in the back of the property, so it's, it's not visible as you drive down the street except for in a couple very minor locations, you can catch glimpses of it as a distance at the rooftop. So there's a lot of vegetation around the building, so in, in most cases, you wouldn't see the rooftop unit even if you were looking for it. But it is visible from a far distance on Charleston Street. But we're just requesting that it be placed on the roof because financially, it's much easier to place this unit here than on the ground. It's an existing structure, there's not enough room in the existing attic space to put the unit inside the attic. That's what we would have preferred to do at the beginning. To put it outside and on the ground would also require ductwork to be run up the side and then connected on the roof like you have seen. And there's a condition right here where you can see exposed ductwork on the roof, which in my opinion is much more intrusive than a very clean, modern unit that just goes right down.
Very good.
So it, I, I hope that the staff and the council will respectfully consider my applicant's request.
Very good. This is a public hearing, anybody who'd want to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
I have a comment.
Commissioner Steinman?
One reason these things are in the code is that when we go into older neighborhoods and they will evolve over time, we try to do it right. Why do it like we've always done it? Let's do it right. And I, I can't understand why you're putting ducting on the outside of a, of a building.
We don't wanna put ducting on the outside of the building.
I know, well then put it inside.
And, and the reason we can't put it inside is this is an existing building with less than 30 inches of space in the attic space. So it either needs to go on the roof or on the ground. If it goes on the ground, then we have to run ducting up the side of the building onto the roof so then we can disperse it through the ceiling space. And it would look, which we want to avoid, the look of some of the other residences that in fact have that exposed.
What I see on the screen is ugly.
Exactly, and that, and that's not...
That was on the roof. It's ugly.
Can we move that slide back one?
Go back.
Can you see, can you see that one, sir?
It's a nice-looking little building and then this thing's sitting on top.
Uh-huh.
It doesn't make any sense.
It will not fit in the attic space.
Okay.
And...
I'll put it on the ground and run a channel up the side, cover in the ductwork and it'll work fine. I'm not gonna support that, I'll tell you. I don't wanna, if it's gonna be eliminated, I'm gonna vote against it. Because we've got to change things as we go through the older neighborhoods and correct it.
Commissioner Quinn?
If, if that is a deal breaker, might I also request possibly providing an architectural screen around the unit? The owner actually wants to come back possibly in the future, he's done a lot of improvements to the property, he's put over $200,000 since he's purchased the property to keep it well-maintained.
This is the property we're looking at, correct?
This is the existing primary residence. This is, this is the existing condition here and, and what he is proposing in the future to do is, is possibly put these architectural facades in front of the units. There has to be enough clearance around for air circulation, but these would be facades on the, on the fronts and the sides. Now, this elevation is his backyard, so it's, it's really for his own aesthetic purposes.
They appear like dormers, basically.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. But, but I think that does look pretty good, I must admit. But I'm not sure when you're putting it on the peak of the roof, which appears in your plan, that you can really do that and make it look like that. That's the problem.
It will, it will be raised slightly farther, but this is...
It'll look like a chimney on top, that's what it'll look like.
And there, there are elements, I should have taken a picture of that, but there is a, also a doghouse feature on the existing residence above the garage that is, is smaller but does form that kind of above-the-ridge-peak element.
Well, it may, it may not be a deal breaker, it's what the rest are gonna vote anyway. I'm, I'm always saying how I feel, but... Well, Commissioner... Chairman, I'm, I'm kind of, I was all prepared to make a motion for approval and I'm perplexed now and my fellow commissioner Quinn here is as well, so I'm confused. The ductwork, was that your argument for not putting it on the roof or for putting it on the roof?
For not putting it on the roof.
For not putting it on the roof.
I'm sorry. For leaving the unit on the roof, it's a very clean...
It's an existing structure, right?
It's, it's a very new, modern...
Wait, wait a minute. It's an existing structure?
Yes.
And you're converting it from a class two to a class one, so you're adding a kitchen?
Yes.
Okay. And the staff's recommending approval?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the suggestion in the staff report or the condition was that the air conditioner not be on the roof. Is it already on the roof?
It is already on the roof.
Oh, okay. So I'm not, I like the idea that you wanna create a little architectural element and I know in those little crestwood gingerbread-type houses like the dormer thing that they mentioned, there's a way you can screen it to make it attractive, consistent with the architecture and absolutely fine. There's gotta be a way we can do that without confusing this matter. Staff's recommending approval, I think we should get to the approval, but if there's some concession you can make about an architectural feature, enclosing or fronting or masking or a facade to keep the air conditioner unit from being specifically seen, I think that you probably would see support.
Okay. And that's, that's what our intent is, is to comply with the intent of, of title 19 in the code and also to appease the neighbors. In fact, I believe his adjacent neighbor to the west as well as to the south have sent in letters of their support or, or filled out the petition.
So you're substantially in agreement to that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But, but the unit is existing on the roof and to relocate it would, would be quite a hardship.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
I'm ready to make a motion for approval unless if anybody else has anything else to say about it.
Please do.
I make motion for approval, following all staff's recommendations of SUP 30239, for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 23, please cast your vote.
May I ask, just, just to make sure that we're getting the wishes of the commission, if that is with the existing condition that says that the air conditioning may not be mounted on the roof, or is it with an addition to that condition reading something such as, "If roof-mounted, the air conditioning must be fully enclosed within an architecturally compatible, within, except, architecturally compatible screening, subject to approval of the Department of Planning and Development."
That would be it. Thank you.
Motion on the floor?
So, as amended.
As amended. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
And that goes forward to the city council at their meeting of December 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you staff.
Thank you. Mr. Jay Brown, you're gonna love this, we're gonna take a break. For about 10 minutes.
It's October.
We're going to begin the meeting in about two minutes. There you go. Short as what?
His meetings are short too. He's met with me before. They've been less than two minutes. Here's the code. Here's my issue.
Make your point and move on.
Here's your options.
Staff, we're going to begin. Meeting? We're going to begin with Item 24. Item 24 is RQR 29727, applicant Reagan National Advertising, owner Gateway Motel, Inc., one-year review of an approved special use permit, U 002801, for a forty-foot-tall, twenty-four-by-twenty-eight-foot off-premise sign billboard at 928 South Las Vegas Boulevard. Staff?
The off-premise sign under review is located within the Las Vegas Arts District in the downtown Centennial Plan, and also within the Las Vegas Boulevard Scenic Byway Overlay District, both of which were established after the approval of the original special use permit. Within the Las Vegas Arts District, off-premise signs are still allowed with the approval of a special use permit, but must be mounted flush to the side of a building or structure. No freestanding off-premise signs are allowed. Within the Las Vegas Boulevard Scenic Byway Overlay District, off-premise signs are prohibited. These changes in the condition of the area make this existing off-premise sign incompatible with the surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff is recommending denial.
Applicant?
Good evening. Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street, representing the applicant. This billboard's been approved, I believe, four times by the City Council. I think twice by this board. I don't believe anything's changed in the area since the last approval, and we'd appreciate your approval tonight as well.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board?
It's Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Evans?
I appreciate this. Mr. Brown is correct. It was approved a few years ago. This is the review period. I think at some point, we'll have to revisit whether or not that sign is appropriate, particularly somewhere down the future when the installation of the Gateway Arch project is installed. I don't think that's for any time immediately in the future. And I think if approved, conditions require a three-year review period where the matter would be revisited in three years. So if there's no discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion for approval.
Applicant, are you in agreeance with all conditions?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans, motion?
Motion for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 24. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
Thank you very much.
That goes forward to City Council on December 3rd.
Thank you.
Item 25, RQR 30045, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner D.R. Partners, for four-year review of an approved special use permit, U 0069-98, for a fourteen-foot-by-forty-eight-foot off-premise sign billboard at 111 West Bonanza Road. Staff?
Staff is recommending approval of the required review as the off-premise sign under review is in good condition, has been permitted and inspected, and there have been no significant changes in the surrounding area since the original approval of the special use permit.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening. Rod Carter, 28, 80 Need Avenue, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor. Appreciate the recommendation for approval. Concur with the conditions, and I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to comment on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Motion on Item 25?
I'll make a motion on RQR 30045, Agenda Item Number 25, move for approval, subject to conditions.
Motion for approval of Item 25. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Goes forward to Council on December 3rd.
Item 26, RQR 30162, applicant owner 1767 Rancho LLC, five-year review of an approved special use permit, U 0109-94, for a forty-foot-high, fourteen-foot-by-forty-eight-foot off-premise sign billboard at 1767 North Rancho. Staff?
Staff is recommending approval of the required review as the off-premise sign under review is in good condition, has been permitted and inspected, and there have been no significant changes in the surrounding area since the original approval of the special use permit. Conditions have been added to address bird nuisance and maintenance issues.
Applicant?
If I may ask, please, the agenda says denial. Is that an error in the agenda?
My copy says that too.
The guts of the report says approval, though.
I'm just checking to make sure.
You're right. The front says denial.
It is an error on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
The staff report is correct. It is a recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Okay. Applicant, name and address, and are you in agreeance with all conditions?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Tony Celeste, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, here on behalf of the applicant. And we thank staff for the recommendation of approval and agree with all of the conditions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience want to speak for or against this item, come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion on Item 26.
Regards to motion Item Number 26, request review 3162, make a recommendation for approval, so we tell staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 26. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Goes forward to Council on December 3rd.
Item 27, SDR 30276, applicant owner Clark County School District for the construction of a new elementary school with a waiver of the cliff's edge development standards to allow chain-link fencing along the perimeter at the northwest corner of Egan Crest Drive and Severance Lane. Staff?
Staff supports the requested waiver to allow chain-link fence in the cliff's edge development standards. Staff also finds that the development to be in compliance with the other cliff's edge development standards and recommends approval.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Linda Perry, 4212 Eucalyptus Annex. I'm representing the Clark County School District. We're here before you tonight for a site development review on an elementary school that's located in the Providence Master Plan Community. It's scheduled to open in August of '09. When they did the master plan for Providence, the elementary school site and the middle school site, which is to the north, was included in their master plan. It's a '98 prototype that's going on the site. And we did hold a neighborhood meeting back on April 1st of '08. It's been kind of a while back, but we did hold one. There were a few neighbors that attended, and really their only question was, "When's the school going to open?" They didn't have any comments. They didn't have any objections. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Steinman?
Why aren't you using wrought iron? Why are you using chain-link?
We don't like to use the wrought iron because it's a safety measure for the children.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We don't want them to stick their hands or their heads through it and kind of get stuck. So we make sure that we have the chain-link there.
Describe what it's going to look like, because it's not just pure chain-link. Rather, there's pilasters and everything involved in this, whole design. Am I correct? It's not just a whole sheet, a long thing of, the way I'm reading here, it's got a little breakup to it. Anybody know?
Yeah, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I'll answer that. I'm Matt Tepper, representing the architecture firm, Dumea Camber Corporation. My residence is 5051 Midnight Oil Drive. As per typical CCSD standards, the perimeter around, and shown in this drawing, around the south property line to west property line around the north would be chain-link fence only. Around the kindergarten from this portion here along the south property line around the front, Main Street facing, is, I believe it's on the site plan that was submitted into the site plan community, it's CMU pilasters with a two-foot-high low wall with chain-link in between those two.
Above.
Yeah. Those pilasters are roughly twelve feet apart.
And that's on Egan Crest and Severance? Is that where the pieces of it?
At the main corner around the kindergarten area along the Main Street.
But the rest, the predominance, is true chain-link.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion on Item 27.
I'll make a motion on 27, SDR 30276, move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 27. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days to the office of the city clerk.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Tell the neighbors it's on its way. Thank you. Item 28, ROC 30013, applicant owner Spinnaker Homes, to amend Condition Number 18 of an approved site development plan review, SDR 27226, which stated, "Construct half-street improvements, including appropriate overpaving on Tenaya Way, and all incomplete improvements on Grand Teton Drive and Whispering Sands Drive adjacent to this site, concurrent with the development of the site. Extend all required underground utilities such as electrical, telephone, traffic signal system, et cetera, located within the public right-of-way prior to construction of hard-surfacing asphalt or concrete. All existing paving damaged or removed by this development shall be restored at its original location and to its original width concurrent with developments of this site on the southwest corner of Grand Teton and Tenaya Way." Staff?
Staff recommends approval with the approved conditions as written.
Applicant?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Chris Kemfer. Joe Thomason, the engineer here on behalf of the applicant. I think the best way to handle this is to read actually from the staff report in the analysis section, which is, it states, "In addition, the applicant indicates that the city is currently designing a regional flood control facility, a box culvert, to be constructed within the Grand Teton Drive right-of-way in the 210-211 fiscal year," which, by the way, we just confirmed with Mr. Anderson, we're hoping to, the city is hoping to have that start in 2009, "which would interfere with the immediate development of Grand Teton Drive as contemplated in the existing condition. The Department of Public Works has confirmed the design and construction plans for this public improvement project and agrees that delaying the off-site improvements on Grand Teton would be of mutual benefit at this time. The Department of Public Works recommends approval of the review of Condition to modify Condition Number 18." Condition Number 18 stated that, as you can see, that you had to do the half-street improvements at the time construction commenced. Now, the half-street improvements along Grand Teton would have to then be put in and removed at such time as the culvert were put in. So it doesn't make any sense from the city's standpoint. It makes no sense from the developer's standpoint that you would have to pay for something that would have to be removed so the bulk box culvert can go in. Now, we have Sharon in the audience with us. One of the things that has just occurred to me is that the only condition, or the only issue with which this condition deals, is the half-street improvements. And it's the half-street improvements that we are asking not be put in, together with the items specifically set forth in that condition. One of the issues that Sharon, and she's certainly free to express herself, but one of the issues she had was whether the trail was going to go in. I don't know the answer to that question, but I do know that this particular condition just talks about the half-street improvements and the modification so that those half-street improvements are not required to go in until such time as Phase 3 is developed. What you have in front of you is, this is the orchard site. This is Phase 1 here. At such time as Phase 1 is developed, all of the improvements along Whispering Sands are to be completed. When Phase 2 is started, all of the Phase 2 improvements are to be completed. And then when Phase 3 begins, regardless of Phase 3 and 4, when Phase 3 begins, then all of the improvements on Grand Teton will be in. At that point in time, the culvert that the city has planned will be in. Then you can put your off-site improvements on, your half-street improvements, and that would, you know, obviously save the developer money and also save the city time and effort in having to rip up improvements that the developer had put in. For those reasons, staff has recommended approval. We'd respectfully request your approval as well.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this item, please come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioners, Ms. Wheeler. Sharon Linsenbart, 7280 West Grand Teton Drive. As Chris has just stated, the last time we were before you on this, they wanted stamped concrete and encroach upon the trail. From that point in time, we went through, and I demanded some trees. They agreed. From that point in time, I went down to the city, and I spent probably two months, fifteen or twenty meetings, countless phone calls, trying to make sure that this trail was improved and put in as opposed to stamped concrete and encroachment upon it. In those discussions, the flood issue was addressed. They were supposed to put in a culvert in addition to the trail in order to handle the waters. Since that point in time, no one from city has contacted me to let me know about this change. So this is the first night that I've heard about it. All I heard was that phasing was going to be addressed. I don't have a problem-
Let me ask staff, were we required to notice that? Director Wheeler?
I believe we did a public hearing notice on this review of condition-
Of which I did not receive anything. But at any rate, with the dozens of hours that I spent down at city and the numerous contacts that I had at such time that this got changed, I think a phone call could have been appropriate, although it wasn't. It didn't, and here we are. My issue is, the trail can be divorced from the street improvements, and if they're allowed to phase, the three phases, because of economics or whatever, and I'm going for something on my piece of ground, that means that I'm going to be there for five, six, eight years without Grand Teton being developed. Now- for five, six, eight years without Grand Teton being developed. Now, if in fact, money becomes available for that flood channel, and they do start doing something in 2009, very good, then it's a win-win for everyone. If it isn't such, and we all of a sudden are in there for five, six, eight years with no improvements on Grand Teton, and they're developing their project, the trail doesn't get put in, the water isn't handled, and the street isn't done with this phasing. So as Chris suggested, if it's just the street where the city's going to dig up to put your big boxes, I don't have an issue with that. But I do have an issue with giving him phasing for Grand Teton, which may be six, eight, 10 years away, depending on economy. Let's just get real and say six or eight. Then I'm not gonna have any improvements on Grand Teton. And when I say "I," the neighbors that depend on me to speak for them, and that have worked on this thing for a decade, are going to be sitting there with no improvements on Grand Teton. So the original request to have all of the improvements started at the time of inception of building, they're asking to change. I would like to see that not change anything except the pavement where your box culvert may go in.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Ellsworth?
Vice Chairman Throbert? My question is for Public Works. What is the proposed construction schedule for the box culvert?
There's not a definite schedule as of yet. From conversations with the flood control section, this is a funded project, so it does have money for the design and construction. It's currently under design. We're anticipating construction to begin at the earliest late 2009, potentially 2010. But it is a viable and real project that has been funded.
So as of now, the design is underway. There's no firm path that the box culvert would be in? We know it's between the street.
That's right. That's right. It hasn't been located within the street as of yet.
So we can't identify where it's going to be?
Not yet. But I can tell you that I have been assured that it is going to be built either in late 2009 or starting in 2010.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Ellsworth?
Just wanna make sure I understand correctly that, so, as you begin Phase 1, can we go back to the photograph where it shows the different phases? Is that possible so that we can?
Yeah, I think that's on, there we go.
There we go. The moment you begin Phase 1 is when you do all the improvements along the street that, but Phase 1, is that correct?
Whispering Sands.
Whispering Pine?
Oh, Whispering Pines.
Sands, Whispering Sands.
Whispering Sands.
And then you don't begin Phase, the moment you begin Phase 2, you're gonna do the next street, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the same would be the last month you get Phase 3, then you'll do the other?
Yes. Which is not an unusual requirement that off-sites be phased with as the project progresses. How we got here is Councilman Ross, and he can tell you this himself, or Sheila, or whatever, we got here because what was happening is projects were being completed and the off-sites weren't being completed. Housing market was going crazy, and people were building their houses, and they weren't doing the off-sites. So Councilman Ross imposed a condition on a lot of projects that essentially said, "Look, I don't wanna be stuck in the position where you've got 95% of your houses done, and you don't have the off-sites yet. So I want the off-sites to go in right when you start your project." Well, that condition was posed on probably, I don't know, half a dozen, dozen projects. The problem is, is with the market now, you can't do that anymore. This is 31 homes. This is Phase 1. It has nothing to do essentially with what's going on here. If this were a separate parcel, you wouldn't have any development up here at all essentially. And so what we're asking is, with Phase 1, we do anything and everything that affects Phase 1. Phase 2, anything and everything that affects Phase 2. Phase 3, again, anything and everything that affects Phase 3, which is essentially the whole, all of the off-sites would be done. The reason that Grand Teton was, the condition relating to Grand Teton is important is because even if you were to say, "Well, we want you to do the improvements on Grand Teton," we'd have to rip 'em out. You just heard Mr. Anderson say it's either the end of 2009, the start of 2010. We're not sure when, but it's a fully funded project. Now we, every one of us has hated that. When you drive down the street, you see a brand-new paving, and then the next thing you know is somebody's ripping it up to put something else in. And that's what we're trying to avoid. I think staff's report is absolutely accurate. It's in the mutual benefit not to do that, especially since what we're doing doesn't affect this at all. That's the reason for the request, and we'd respectfully-
And I think what Sharon's concern is, is the timing of all this. And I think everything's gonna get there.
Yeah.
But I think her concern is, when? Because I guess what she's saying, if she's across the street and she has an intention of developing, but she has the fear that she's gonna require to do everything right then, right now to get it in. She wants to make sure that that same thing happens across the street so that everything that was promised would be there. And I think I heard you tonight say, "It is going to be there."
It'll be there. It's just a question of timing. Sharon owns this property here. As a consequence, because she's on Grand Teton, when she develops on Grand Teton, the county is obviously gonna require that she do her half-street improvements at the time she does her project.
Construction, right.
And if we were in fact, starting here, those would be the, we would have to do the same thing. Now, I'm not sure how this culvert would affect her improvements if she were to start, and, you know, hopefully the city and county would coordinate that they wouldn't want her to put in half-street improvements that would have to be ripped out so that a culvert could go in. It seems like it's in everybody's best interest, whether it's Sharon or whether it's our client, that we just wait until the culvert's in, then we can do the things that we have to do to finish everything off.
Vice Chairman Throbert?
I'm-
No further discussion of it?
No, I'm actually kind of lost now. I'm sorry. It sounds like the timing is the issue, and Ms. Lysenbart, and as a matter of disclosure, she, they have my homeowner's insurance and haven't raised or decreased my premium, so I don't think it'll, my vote won't matter one way or another. Is the timing the issue? Is that what I'm hearing? The only, the staff's recommending approval. The application is simply that you phase in the off-street improvements.
Yes.
And Ms. Lysenbart's concern is, you don't know when that's gonna occur, and it may affect her property. Is that a fair characterization of, how do we get to some kind of compromise, I guess? I'm not sure what I'm voting on, whether or not a yes or no vote, what the result of that would be.
The only thing we are asking is that the condition that specifically talks about, "Construct half-street improvements, including appropriate over paving on Tenaya Way, and all incomplete improvements on Grand Teton Drive and Whispering Sands adjacent to the site concurrent with the development of this site." And then there's, you can read, you know, so I'm not reading to you, but that's basically what we're talking about. And then it says, "Extend all required underground utilities." In other words, all of these things that we're gonna go into these straits, we're saying, "Let's hold off until and because of the culvert." So we're really, the only real concern is Grand Teton. I mean, once this phase begins, everything on Whispering Sands is in. Once this begins, everything on Tenaya is in.
Okay, but the subject property that we're showing on the map, what happens to that? Is that just vacant, or are only parts of the homes being constructed? Is that the-
On the whole property here?
Right.
All, the whole thing's vacant. And then what we would do is start here, and then here, and then here. And as we go, then the off-sites next to it would be constructed. I don't think Sharon's concern to me, and she can certainly state it herself, is not the off-site, not the half-street improvements or the fact that utilities are not being put in. Her concern is the trail along Grand Teton, and what's the status of that, and when is that going in?
Can we, does anybody know?
No, that's not affected by this. So I guess we'll, you know, we'll have to work with staff on what kind of a trail they'll want and where it's supposed to go.
I think the trail, I think some more important elements are the number of trees that were gonna be there, and all of that. And I think what one of her concerns is, is what she's seeing evolving now, coming from the, from outer her front door, that would be to the west, up Buffalo, mainly the school district. And what she says now is representing what's supposed to be a trail, is now concrete coming from Grand Teton going east, seems to be concrete and not a nice, luscious trail with trees.
The school district was allowed to put in essentially a concrete trail.
And I, and let me just back up, and Mr. Kemfer, you may not be the one to answer this, but I know that, I'm assuming this was part of the Gilkees Orchard Site?
Yes.
For 50 years, or 60, or however long, they had an orchard. This body heard the school site a number of years ago. We had serious concerns about that, and ultimately, I think it was approved. To my knowledge, though, there was never any flooding in that area until the school was built. Now, will the culvert direct the water elsewhere to keep that from flooding? And are there any flood issues with the half-street improvements or the culvert not being put in, or what, and what's with the balance of the site? I'm assuming you can only build the homes as the market would demand, because obviously the market isn't what it was when Spinnaker, whomever, purchased the property.
Right.
What happens to the balance of the property in the interim? Is it, is it just dirt, or is it fenced, or?
No, it's, well, I think there is an existing fence, is there not?
There is no existing fence that I'm aware of. I believe it would just remain unimproved in the interim.
And there wouldn't be, there's no flooding issues with that?
It, other than any issues that already exist in that area, as a result of whatever flows are coming down Grand Teton, whatever, with it unimproved, it does not make it, it does not impact it or make it any worse. It just allows the water to come back across the property, is what it would do, being unimproved.
Can you put your name and address on the record, please?
I'm sorry, Joe Thomason, 3277 East Warm Springs Road.
Well, what about the trail issue? Is that something that we can get clarity on? Or, I'm assuming it's not part of this application, but?
It is my understanding that the condition for the project, in any event, is to build the trail to city standards when it is constructed. And so I believe that Ms. Lysenbart will get what the neighbors are, and the neighborhood is looking for. Again, I think it is just a timing issue.
Was that already decided in terms of trees and the look of the trail and all that? Because I remember there was a discussion previous, and I'm trying to piece all this together, and I beg my, beg your indulgence, because I can't remember all the specifics. And, you know, just my opinion is, as a community, we really messed up with allowing the orchard to go away. But that's all horse out of the barn stuff. But are there, is there standards with the trail, and is that, it's not part of the half-street improvements that we're looking at on this application, right? This is a review of the condition to phase in the improvements, right?
Yes. And it is the modification of condition number 18. That is the only condition that has been requested to be changed. And-
Staff concurs.
Right. So she's going to get the trail as is?
According to what he read, that's not true.
Well, Sharon, you want to come back up to, let me go ahead, and this is an important issue. Let me go ahead and open the public hearing again.
Yeah.
Quickly and get it all out.
Unless I misunderstood what he said, all improvements on Grand Teton are to be diverted. I am having absolutely no expectation of putting down pavement and ripping it up. There should be, nothing have to be ripped up if in fact your culvert goes in the center of the street and/or in part of the street. The block wall, the trail, maybe even the curb, could be installed upon, as originally requested, this entire whole project. And then it can stay vacant, and nobody needs to see all the construction goings on. But according to the way this is read, this says, "All improvements on Grand Teton can be diverted." Well, that's not necessary. What's necessary possibly is the pavement. I don't have an issue with that. But I do have an issue with everything being diverted for years.
Because then you're saying-
If I wanted to do that on my property, if I wanted to develop my five acres, and I came before this board and said, "I only wanna put in the curb and gutter, but I don't wanna do the street for five years," would you let me? I doubt it. Just because he has 40 acres is no different than if someone with a smaller piece wants to develop. You're required to do your improvements as requested in the beginning. He's got 40 acres of ground. He ought to be improving it according to the original request and the original demand. Doesn't mean he has to build all the houses and sell them. Doesn't mean he has to even pave the street that you might have to tear up. But it does mean that he has to make it look acceptable, and that those citizens don't have to go around cones and dirt and dump trucks and water trucks for the next decade. That's all I'm saying. And unless this wording has changed, it says, "All improvements on Grand Teton get diverted," then I have an issue with it.
Let me ask, no, it says, let's read this.
Let me re-
Here's what it says. The condition as it exists now says, "Construct half-street improvements, including appropriate over paving on Tenaya Way, and all incomplete improvements on Grand Teton Drive and Whispering Sands Drive adjacent to this site concurrent with development of this site." That's the, and then it says, "Extend all required underground utilities such as electrical, telephone, traffic signal located within public right-of-way prior to construction of hard surfacing asphalt or concrete. All existing paving damaged or removed by this development shall be restored at its original location and to its original width concurrent with development of this site." That's the way the condition originally read. The condition as modified, which staff suggested and which we have agreed, now says, "Construct half-street improvements, including over paving on Tenaya Way, and all incomplete improvements on Grand Teton Drive-
Exactly.
-and Whispering Sands adjacent to this site concurrent with development of this site. Phased construction of required half-street improvements shall be allowed in accordance with the phasing plan submitted 9/16/08, accepting that Tenaya Way shall be fully constructed to within 50 feet of the south right-of-way line of Grand Teton," if we can go on the, that's, if we can go to the overhead again.
That's coming all the way up Tenaya, except for 50 feet from the stop sign.
Right. And that says, "Concurrent with Phase 2, and each phase shall be considered a site for the purposes of condition number 19 below. Extend all," and then the rest of it, it says, "Extend all underground utilities," that's the same. So instead of saying, "With the site," they're breaking it down essentially into three different sites. This is a site, this is a site, and this is a site. And then you have to construct the improvements that are concurrent, adjacent to the site that's being developed. And-
So let me ask Public Works. So Bart, this doesn't mean that you're gonna, you're gonna get a trail and some trees, and then the sidewalk and stuff will come later. It's not kind of a piecemeal. It will be a project where everything will be done, once this culvert's put in, every, all the incomplete improvements will be done at one time. Is that correct?
Well, it certainly could be done that way, and most likely that would be the way that I would anticipate it. I hadn't actually considered the trail myself until Ms. Linsenbart brought it up this evening. And I'm, as I recall, the plan that they had submitted and got approved had a kind of an open-channel swale or drainage corridor behind the trail, south of the trail, if you will. So they had the street, then the trail, and then a drainage swale. And this new project, the box culvert project the city's putting in, is going to, the intent is to get rid of the flood issues that are plaguing this area. And very likely, the drainage swale that would be behind the trail would go away as a result of the new box culverts. Also, because without the box culverts there, the amount of water in the street was such that the trail would have to be armored in a way with erosion control, very large stones, instead of the more decorative gravel type of things. That also could go away as a result of the box culverts. So it would, it would be challenging, I think, to have the trail stand alone without the improvements. It could be done if the council and the planning commission wanted it to be done that way. I'm sure it could be done.
So what it sounds to me like, Sharon, is it's going to be a, whenever they get to do this, all of those improvements are- to do this, all of those improvements are going to be done. I don't think you're going to have something, something constructed, and then wait a decade for the next piece to come in. From what Bart just said, it sounds like it's going, once they get that box culvert in, and understand how to divert the water to keep from flooding, the rest of the intention of that project is going to be built. And according to Bart, it's budgeted to be built.
But if you pass this this evening, they will not be forced to build Grand Teton until the third and fourth phase. It can wait for years. As it's conditioned now, it has to be originated when they originate Phase One. With this first sentence that says here...
So you're saying when they go to Phase One, you want them to do all the improvements all the way around that site?
As originally agreed, with all the neighbors, with everybody, with all the conditions.
Vice Chairman.
But, but I understand economics today, I get it. But if you read Phase, if you read Sentence One, it says, "And all incomplete improvements on Grand Teton, adjacent to this site concurrent with the development of this site," which means they'll phase even the trail. So they're not going to, I don't have...
You don't want them to phase it, you want it to get done.
You know, if all developers were required to do as originally agreed with all of the neighbors, and all of the conditions, and all of the compromises, and not keep coming back and changing things, we wouldn't be standing here. But, at this point in time, these three sections, I don't really even have a problem with the phasing. But timing is an issue. When is the culvert going to be put in? I had lengthy discussions with the city regarding this flooding and this culvert, and the issue remained. Either they put in the drainage channel, and not encroach upon the trail as originally designed, and go ahead and put in the trail and do it, what it amounts to at this time to simplify it, is in order for them not to put in the culvert, that I worked long and hard to make happen, so this would all be done at one time, as originally agreed. They want to leave out the culvert, wait for flood control to put in their project, phase this thing, and not be required to put in Grand Teton until if and when they decide to do Three and Four. If they don't decide to do Three and Four, and correct me if I'm wrong with this language, that means they don't ever have to do Grand Teton. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that, she's right. If we leave, if we leave $100 million piece of property, if we leave half of that vacant, I suppose we would not have to do improvements. That's simply not going to happen. It's just a question of when are we going to get there. Phasing of offsites is something that's been done...
For years.
Forever. And it was only because the councilman, and I understood his concern, is that these projects were popping up and being built faster than you could imagine, that he said, "Wait a minute, I'm concerned about offsite." One of the things that, I mean, if that is the concern, then what we can do is, when the culvert is done, when the culvert is done, we can bond for, if you want, for the improvements that, the half-street improvements that we would otherwise be required to do. Whatever we would be required to do at that point in time when the culvert's done, we can bond for that. So that you know the money's there when you want it developed. But I, I don't, I don't know what else to say, except...
Well, you don't, let me take a shot. You don't know when, and I don't either.
No, I mean...
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
Okay, I, we're going all around the bush here. Let me, let me just cut it down to a few words if I can here. What we've got is a health, safety issue. That's that flood control matter. That needs to be addressed. We've also got the need for a trail. I understand the need to have consistency, and the trail to be developed in accordance with the city standards at the right time. Now, I, everyone agrees that phasing is an acceptable approach. You know, there's problems with building a concrete swale and a trail now, because you don't know where the, you've got a land you've got to dedicate, or an easement you've got to dedicate for the concrete swale. The trail would have to go on the outside of it. Now, we've still got the unresolved issue as to where the box culvert's going to be. The difference between a box culvert and a concrete swale is version .1 and version 4.0. You know, the concrete, or the box culvert is a far superior way to deal with flood control. They're more expensive up front, but in the long run, they're far cheaper, and you're not going to have, the problem is over with. You can also use the land that's on top of it. And so, while I sympathize with you when you say you don't have a commitment now as to when that trail will be put in, I think it's wishful that we would try to hold somebody to say, "Put in the trail now," because they really don't know where it's going to be. You're going to invest the money to do the concrete swale, invest the money to do the trail, and you still don't know where it's going to be. It's going to get torn up and have to be replaced and moved. And that's, you know, we're worrying about something that is certainly worth being concerned with. But I don't think that that concern would take precedence over having a systematic approach, a phased approach to providing the development of the offsites that are necessary. I don't see the requirement to have offsites built prior to, anytime prior to the certificate of occupancies being issued for the properties. So I, I understand your concerns, but I think that the proposal that's coming forward with the positive staff recommendation outweighs your concerns at this point. And if we don't have any additional issues to come up, I'm ready to make a motion to that effect.
No more comments, questions? Motion, Vice Chairman.
I do want to say one thing, at the risk of "I told you so," I strongly believe that, and I, we should have kept this a rural preservation area, and we should have kept the Gilkriese Orchard.
Absolutely, they should be selling tomatoes out there cheap.
Pardon?
They should be selling tomatoes out there cheap, but I don't think we can control that.
Well, many of the actions of our board created the situation that a gem in our community no longer exists. And it didn't have flooding until we started building homes out there with a great density, so.
You're right.
Again, risk of saying "I told you so," it's just one of those things that I'm saddened about.
I can't, couldn't agree with you more. Okay, but at any rate, we've got Item Number 28, which is a review of Condition 30013. Make a recommendation to support staff's position of approval. Submit all staff conditions as modified.
Is that as modified, including the bond that Mr. Kemfer offered for this woman? Because I think that's showing his due diligence to her, and making her a promise that, to me, is very reputable and very nice of you.
Actually, with all due respect to Sharon, it's not her bond. It would be a bond to the, to the city of Las Vegas.
Oh, the city would have to do it. Oh, I thought you would have to do it, Mr. Kemfer. I misunderstood.
No, no, no. I'm saying, but when you said "offered to her," it's a city, it's a bond that actually is provided to the city.
Would that be a nice way to compromise tonight, sort of?
Well, yeah, if Sharon's concern is that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't...
Well, you're gonna, if we're asked, I guess Commissioner Quinn was asking, "Would you offer that as a, as another condition?" Then I would ask Bart how to craft that, so it would, how that condition would read.
Am I to understand, I apologize, I had to switch gears there for a second, that we're asking to bond for the future installation of the trail, or the entire street?
The improvements, the entire improvements that this lady is requesting, that we understand economically cannot be done now during Phase One, and she understands that too, and probably can't be done in Phase Two either. But when it comes to Phase Three, that that money is there in place, so that at the end of the day, whether it's five years or 10 years from now, that money is there to satisfy this woman, who has spent hours and days and months protecting her neighborhood.
Well, let's try this. Let's add to the condition of approval, Number One for the ROC, language to the effect that, upon completion of the city's public improvement project for the box culvert within Grand Teton, and I hope the clerks are getting this, because I'm not writing it down at this time, upon completion of the box culvert project, the applicant shall provide a bond for all Phase Three improvements within 60 days of completion of the, of the flood control project? No?
Let's see, Mr. Lewis with some concern.
I just, I'm not, I'm, I'm still having a hard time visualizing what it is we're trying to secure here.
Well, let me go back. Mr. Kemfer mentioned, can you recall what you mentioned about bond?
Yes, what I said is, when the culvert is done, Sharon's concern was, they'll, may never get done, may never get done. And what we said is, all right, we'll offer a bond for those half-street improvements, and the things that we're otherwise asking to waive, we'll put up a bond to the city. But we're not at, what we'll say, though, is that the bond will, at such time as Phase Three comes into play, if those, if those improvements have not been started, you have a bond that you can then use to complete the improvements.
Mr. Lewis?
Okay, well, then, I suppose what we're talking about is some sort of, well, improvement agreement that Spinnaker would enter into with the city, immediately upon adoption of this, well, approval of this Item 28 by the City Council, that would secure all improvements, all improvements that would occur upon the development of Phase Three. So they would then, one, promise the city they would do these improvements, and two, they would put up a performance bond. And then if they did that, and Spinnaker then walked away, or went bankrupt, or did whatever developers do, and they would not, and they don't complete Phase Three, then we've got the agreement, and we've got the performance bond. But I think it has to be done now, not after, not after, if, what I understand is correct, we want to secure these Phase Three improvements, the bond, the bond's now. We get the agreement and the bond now, and then they pay the 3% or 5% or 10% of the face amount for as long as Phase Three is not complete. But if that's something the commission wants, then that's what they do. That's how you secure, that's how you secure the improvements. You can't secure the improvements by waiting until Phase Three is, is ready to go, because that's when they need to put in the improvements anyway. So if we want the improvements bonded, we get them now.
So, Mr. Kemfer, if we proffer up that condition, are you, are you going to be able to say you are okay with it tonight?
I'm going to say we're okay with it tonight. If we're not okay with it tonight, we'll, you know, we'll have to take it up with City Council, but...
So, hold on, if we put that condition in, and Jim's saying it's now, is there a timeframe that that money has to be in the bank?
Well, yeah, bond, yeah.
What I mean by "now" is, what I mean, well, yeah, what Bart talked about before was 60 days after the improvements were done. We want the bond in place. If we're trying to secure the Phase Three improvements now, before the developer is required to file, assign the typical offsite improvement agreement, file the typical bond, then yeah, we need the bond in place at some point after City Council approval. So, the thing is, we're going to have to, our, our Public Works Department is going to have to work with the developer to figure out, of course, how much the improvements are going to cost, and how much it is we're going to bond for. So maybe Bart can speak a little to that, so everyone understands how that works.
Well, I think we got an agreeable condition that the applicant's willing to agree to. And I believe he said something to the, to the tune of 60 days.
Well, Bart...
That's...
May I?
Mr. Thomas?
I, in listening to Bart's language, the, to satisfy the concern that the Grand Teton improvements would be guaranteed, bonded, within a short period of time after the city's flood control project was complete, I mean, I don't think it had, I want to make sure it had nothing to do with Unit Three being completed. It had to do with the city, because we'd be following the city's schedule for the flood control improvements. It did seem to be reasonable. There are some technical, and you, as you were asking, Bart, what has to happen for a bond, a performance bond, to be provided today. There are technical issues. Plans have to be provided, reviewed, approved, a bond estimate generated, approved by the city. And none of that work has been done, and that will all be tied to the flood control project that the city's doing. And I think that's why we were trying to say that the, that those improvements and that design and that bond made sense to be, because that's something that could be worked on concurrent with the city as they're working and constructing the flood control improvement project. And I think that is where Mr. Kemfer was going, is that if that was an item to help assure and ensure that there, that this, that those improvements could be built and would be built within a reasonable period of time, with the flood control project being completed, that was a way to help, show good faith. And that's, that was my only...
It was never my intention to open such a big gap.
Yeah, just, I mean, I...
It was my intention...
There are just technical, there are things that have to happen, and I'm not sure...
Right.
That we, if you said, "Do it in 60 days from today," I'll be honest with you, I don't think we could. We just can't get there. I can't get there.
But we see a single person work so hard, you've got to give her something back to, you know, make her feel like, you know, she's done, done well for her neighbors, and well for her property, and well for what she's holding on to. And when he threw that word "bond" out there, it caught me. And so, unfortunately, maybe it's not the right way to do it, but there's got to be a way to secure it, so that she ends up with...
Let me see if I can get there. I think that the, we've opened an entire issue that could we probably spend the next six months battering agreements back and forth between respective attorneys, and not get us any further than what we really and truly need, which is a level of comfort, that the offsite improvements, as well as the trail to city standards, are going to be built. And I think that we could simply put a very, an additional condition on there that would, would give that level of assurance, in saying that no certificate of issue, of occupancies, rather, would be issued prior to the completion of the offsites. Or final inspection. Yes, I think it's unfair to have someone be required to place a bond that they're going to have to make commitments on for a period of time that is unknown at this point, without knowing when the city's going to actually finish their project. It's, I mean, I agree with you.
As long as there's something put in place.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Public Works.
Bart?
How about the Planning Commission direct staff and the applicant to, you've given us direction, that you want to see some kind of guarantee that the improvements will be done. So between now and City Council, if you'd like to move this object along with that condition, that some bond exists, some mechanism exists to guarantee the offsites on Grand Teton, that we will work between now and City Council, with the applicant, with Public Works, with Planning, with Ms. Lysenbarr, to see if we can come up with something that works, that we can then present to the council based on your direction.
I can, I can accept that. And I would even suggest that perhaps the language would simply address a specific period of time after the completion of the box culvert, you know, a certain number of months, that would give adequate time for the development and financing, whatever that number might be. And then, then the assurance is there. And that would be my motion with the, you know, to approve, submit the staff conditions as modified with the, providing for the development schedule, and the additional condition that an agreement be developed to address the Planning Commission's concern for assurances that the offsites and the trail will be built to city standards within a reasonable period of time after the completion of the box culvert project.
And I would, I would support that motion, except for that, I, I'm curious as to, we left it sort of open-ended, because I'm hearing in this discussion, the issue is less the funding for the offs, the offsites, but rather the timing. Because the way the wording, as I heard it read, in the condition was concurrent with Phase Two, and I think concurrent with Phase Three. And the concern that Ms. Lysenbarr brought forward was concurrent means whenever it gets built. And if it's a decade, that's a problem. So, Commissioner Trowbridge, I like the direction you're going. You know, I was thinking concurrent with Phase, whatever.
You know, I was thinking concurrent with Phase, whatever, but within, say, 48 months or something of that nature. But I don't know, not being an expert at this sort of thing, what would be a reasonable timeframe. But I'm kind of reluctant to leave it open-ended as well.
Well, that was my point, of just some reasonable timeframe, and leave that up to the Public Works staff and the parties to develop some kind of a number to fit in there in terms of months.
Let me go with Ms. Linsenbart, and then Mr. Kemfer.
Might I say, denial of this protects everybody. Protects the people, protects the offsites, protects the trail, protects the original agreement. The agreement that I had with staff protects the trail, the flood control issue, the design, and the timing. What they're asking for is to have no timing and no end result, and a maybe they'll build it at some future date. I am not unopposed or opposed to them having to rip something up. That's foolish for anyone. But that's not what we're talking about here. The culvert is not going to go into the trail. I've seen the culvert go in up above me. It's in the middle of the street. No offsites are going to have to be put, except possibly paving. So denial of this, and if we had someone here from flood, possibly they could give us direction on where that culvert's going to go, which would end this discussion, and deny this and force them to put in what they originally agreed to.
My thinking is maybe, maybe we should hold this.
No. No.
If that isn't going to happen, why didn't the agreement that I made with staff hold where they put in their flood control, the trail, and a curb, and they don't have to put in pavement?
Mr. Chairman?
If we're asking for more than that and more extensive waiting, then I agree. Something needs to be put in place to protect some timing here, and protect their financial issue.
Mr. Kemfer?
Yes, Matt, let's scratch it all. Here's what I think. Her concern is the trail. We're saying that there's nothing in here that says the trail doesn't go in. And I appreciate what the vice chairman is saying about where it may or may not go. One of the things, everything is critical, timing is always critical. This was, or could be, final action by this board unless appealed. The concern she has is the trail. It's more important to us that we get some kind of final action tonight and move forward. Commissioner Quinn, you should not feel bad at all about it because we said the word "bond," so when you said, "Wait a minute, you said that," we thought that that was the concern. But the more I think about it, her concern is the trail. And so, since the trail is not subject, and maybe Director Wheeler could assist here, I don't see the trail being something that's addressed in the waiver of this condition, that we could agree that the approval of this particular item, with the understanding that the trail would go in as originally approved and previously approved by this commission and by the city council. Because you've got, and by the way, Commissioner Evans, so you don't feel so bad about, this was approved by the county. The city did not approve, did not change, the city did not change the zoning, and that was done by the county. So, just so you know that...
No, and I understand that. But you know the history as well as I do, and don't get me going on it, between the school, the orchard, the flooding, the density, the housing, the...
I agree with you.
But that was the discussion we had, and so...
I'm just trying to say the city was not responsible for the zoning of this property.
No, but I will tell you this, I sat on this board, and we voted on a matter related to the school. Some of the problems that are occurring today are a result of some of the actions that took place years ago. That's all I'm saying.
All right, I was just trying to give you a little more credit than...
All right, we're going to close, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Sharon, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to go back and have Commissioner, Vice Chairman Trowbridge restate his motion between now and city council.
If I may, we have the, we have the proposed amended condition, which speaks to the phasing, and this has to do with the half-streets. So, it's my understanding, and Bart and Chris, that the amended condition as proposed is acceptable to the city and to the applicant. An additional sentence, just for the sake of putting that out there, could be added that the trail shall be constructed pursuant to, I'm sorry? In accordance with the original project approval, at which, my thought being that if indeed Mr. Kemfer is correct, and if we all agree that the half-streets are related to the construction of the box culvert, yet the trail could be constructed in a much more timely manner.
Right, which pursuant to the original approval would be within 24 months of approval of their construction drawings for their houses. So, all of the, originally, all of the offsites had to be done within 24 months. Now we're saying some of those can be phased, but the trail would still have to be done within that original 24 months.
So again...
Are you okay with that, that the trail be done?
Yeah, okay, I think that's an excellent additional condition if it's agreeable to the applicant, then that's a motion.
That would be the motion.
So the amended condition as proposed in the staff report, then with the additional sentence as put forward by Mr. Anderson with regard to the trail.
Which is the 24 months, right.
Which is that it shall be constructed in accordance with the original approval within 24 months of building permit.
That's the trail, completion of the trail.
That's acceptable to the applicant. I'm hoping it's acceptable, she will get your trail.
As long as it's in according to city standard.
Oh, without a doubt.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
If it wasn't originally in the original acceptance, it was not originally done.
It will have to be the city standard. So that will be...
Trail completion pursuant to city standard shall be accomplished...
Within 24 months of the original approval, or the approval of construction drawings.
So Vice Chairman Trowbridge made the motion for approval, and subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions, an amended condition as written by Margot and Bart with Public Works.
Which is 24 months, Mr. Chairman, of approval of construction...
From approval of construction drawings.
An approval of construction drawings.
That's correct. And I'm thinking that they will take that wording from the clerk and make sure it's in there appropriate. So please cast your vote for approval. That motion has passed.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the office of the city clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Directors' business, DIR 2999, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, to accept the Las Vegas Downtown Pedestrian Circulation Study, Ward 3 Rees and Ward 5 Barlow. Staff?
The RTC retained a consulting team from Kinley Horn and Associates to conduct a downtown pedestrian circulation study for 10-year improvement plan to make pedestrian travel within the central business core both safer and more attractive. Recommendations were offered in the areas of pedestrian policy programs and improved facilities. The study has been accepted by the RTC's Metropolitan Planning Subcommittee, Transportation Access Advisory Committee, and the Executive Advisory Committee. The sources of funding for the proposed improvements will need to be explored further, and we anticipate that we will do additional community outreach on the project. Because the action has already been taken by the RTC, staff recommends acceptance of the study by the city's planning commission, and it will be forwarded to the city council for their consideration.
Thank you. Since a public hearing, anybody in the audience speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Regarding item number 29, Director's Report 29999, make a recommendation for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
That will go forward to council on December 3rd.
Item 30, TXT 30471, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, to amend the Lone Mountain West Master Development Plan and Design Standards to limit overall residential density to a maximum of seven units per gross acre. Staff?
This proposed text amendment updates the Table 4 within the Lone Mountain West Master Development Plan regarding acreage, unit counts, and density. It adds table notes and other notations to indicate that the maximum gross residential density permitted within the plan is seven dwelling units per acre. Staff recommends approval of these amendments.
Since a public hearing, anybody want to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item 30.
I'll make a motion to approve TXT 30471.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 30, please cast your vote. And that has been approved.
That goes forward to council on December 3rd.
Item 31, DIR 3000, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, to approve the 2009 Planning Commission dates.
The schedule is before you for your consideration and adoption.
Comments or questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion on item 31.
Regarding item 31, Director's Business Number 30,000, make a recommendation for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 31, please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Thank you.
Citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time on any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Meeting is adjourned.